Not have a parking space when you get back. Period. Period.
The city is looking to put up signs here along Beechwood Drive, just south of Ledgewood Drive, and right before the business complex at the end of the street. The signs would not allow visitors to park between the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. seven days a week.
It's been a long time because it's been a challenge. I still want public access to the park. I still want the trails open, but I want to protect the neighborhood from the overwhelming cars that fly up the street.
While Laura and other residents are supportive of City Council's proposal to expand parking restrictions, businesses in the area say new parking regulations will have a negative impact on their bottom line. Among them is Patricia Carroll of Hollywood Land Realty Company, whose building has been there since 1923. She's also a resident in the area.
It would basically kill our commerce in any way possible. We felt very blindsided in this situation because we weren't even aware of the hearings where we could input information.
She's hoping some type of solution will be reached that can help both the business owners and residents. But for now, this iconic sign is the only one that residents and visitors can both agree on. In Hollywood, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
The city has asked the Department of Transportation to provide recommendations for expanding parking restrictions in residential areas near the Hollywood sign. Any parking changes would require the approval of at least 67% of residents. While it's been a month of farewells for council members who are termed out of office, but one going-away party had a bit of an artistic flair, Anna Marcos has more.
He's been fondly known as Mr. LA. Outgoing District Four Councilmember Tom LeBonde has made his mark as a photographer, artist, city historian, nature lover, city leader, and guardian of all things LA.
I thank all those that I've served under, whether it's Mayor Bradley or Mayor Reardon or when I was there and then as elected with my colleagues on the City Council, especially Janice Hahn, who's my best friend. And I'm proud of Eric Garcetti, now our mayor, and what he's done. And Herb Westen, I've known the longest, I believe. So it's been very special.
Even his farewell to the city wasn't just a civic affair, but an artist reception featuring LeBonde's own photography of the City of Angels.
What do you think he should do next?
Um, be a cameraman. He takes a lot of good pictures. You see all these pictures are on the wall.
LeBonde has served the City of LA since 1976, working as City Council staff, then at DWP, before he was elected as council member of the 4th District in 2001. Over the years, he's changed a bit, though his love for Mickey Mouse hasn't. And no LeBonde retrospective would be complete without his favorite gift, pumpkin bread, showing up in the picture. Even the president got a homegrown loaf at one point.
He is such a man of the people. He is so evocative of what Los Angeles really is.
He's very committed, and he's very much charismatic, and he's easily one of the biggest fans of Los Angeles.
LeBonde, it seems, leaves plenty of fans behind.
He said that he might think about teaching, but I hope he runs for mayor when Garcetti's term is finished because we really all love him so much.
Mayor, teacher, Griffith Park patron, saint, and hiker, who knows? But we think in some way we'll be seeing him around. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
LeBonde's last day in office is June 30th. And as he counts down to his last days in office, Councilman LeBonde took the opportunity to reflect on four decades of public service. Gil Reyes has more.
So here we are. Three, two, one. You hear me okay? Hey, here comes Vadim. Get out of here, Vadim. Vadim's the youth. He goes on, but I'm out.
He'll be out all right. LA City Councilman Tom LeBonde, the most boisterous of LA's elected leaders, termed out of his job in July.
Closing on 14 years, almost 14 years as a council member. So over the course of time, I've collected a lot of things. Come on in.
LeBonde, who represents parts of Hollywood, the Miracle Mile, and Sherman Oaks, shows us. His soon-to-be-vacated City Hall office is packed with mementos from his district, art from constituents, relics like this piece of curb from the former home of Walt Disney. There are maps, plaques, and proclamations dedicated to the folksy football-loving former jock from Marshall High School.
Lisa, how's that report doing? You gonna have it done today?
Oh, yes, I am.
All right. Now, take a minute. Don't always be a busy bee. Wave to the camera. Okay. Good. Here's a picture of me right here, and that's Pat O'Brien, and that is Lou Holtz.
He also shows us photographs. LeBonde, an amateur photographer, worked for NFL Films before politics. Prior to becoming councilman, he also spent 26 years working for the city in various roles, mostly as chief deputy to former council president John Ferraro. Altogether, that's 40 years in public service.
When you're from Los Angeles and you're able to contribute in a way like I have, it's a very good feeling to know that, you know? I haven't made everybody happy, haven't solved every problem.
As councilman, LeBonde clashed with activists over the LA Zoo's elephant exhibit. They called it inhumane and sued to close it. They lost. People have also criticized increased development and McMansion-ization in his district, but he's fought to preserve open space.
Well, I think the proudest moment for, as a representative, is to be able to buy the land in Coinga Peak, the open space near the Hollywood sign. If you look over here at this picture here, everything here was private land they could have built on it. Now it's parkland.
This added over 100 acres to his beloved Griffith Park. LeBonde hikes there almost daily. His knowledge of the city has earned him the nickname Mr. Los Angeles, and he plays it up for the cameras.
(singing) I can't help falling in love.
As LA's booming goodwill ambassador and chair of LA's Sister Cities program, LeBonde almost always puts on a good show, leaving crowds smiling or bewildered, oftentimes both. So what's next for the man famous for handing out pumpkin bread made by Dominican nuns to people he meets? Will he ride off into the sunset of Griffith Park?
Sometime in the future, I gotta get a job because my children will still be in college, and my wife doesn't want me running the house all day long.
Are you ruling out politics?
Uh, not ruling it out, but I'm not going to Sacramento. People will ask me to be a United States Senator, and I laugh. I'll tell you this, there's nothing like having this job to help people and to work with people who are into helping people. This is Tom LeBonde from Council District Four, signing off to Channel 35, but I hope to come back on a rerun.
Best wishes to Mr. Los Angeles. Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Councilman LeBonde plans to donate a lot of the memorabilia in his office to the LA City Library and local universities. He also hasn't ruled out teaching or a job in the tourism industry. While the plan to improve the travel experience for passengers at the Los Angeles International Airport continues with rapid renovations, Rasha Goel has more on the latest upgrades at the Delta Terminal. Rasha?
Yana, I'm here at LAX at the Delta Airlines Terminal, and right behind me you can see the new expanded ticket lobby. Now, this is just one of the many changes that has happened in this terminal. And of course, all of this is part of the bigger picture of the LAX $8.5 billion modernization plan. The $229 million project for Delta Airlines also includes...
Over the past three years, Delta has doubled the size of ticketing lobby, renovated their baggage claim, and then built the beautiful Delta Sky Club, where they opened their first-ever exclusive check-in area that we've been talking about, complete with renovated bathrooms and, get this, new shower suites.
It is the first time Delta anywhere in our system has built a dedicated, premium, first-class check-in facility.
The goal is to overall improve customer experience at the second busiest airport.
In April, we opened a $438 million central utility plant, a major infrastructure investment that's 25% more efficient than before. In January, we opened four new gates at Tom Bradley Terminal, one of the finest terminals now in North America.
Collectively, on capital improvement at LAX, we are spending an average of $4.5 million per day.
Officials say Delta has been the fastest-growing carrier since 2009.
And the work done on this terminal alone helped us to have 1,000 additional jobs, good-paying construction jobs, in addition to the 2,800 jobs that Delta already has here.
Delta Airlines is also looking to expand the number of locations they fly to. They currently serve 53 destinations and already have plans to add more destinations to the list this summer. Yana?
Rasha, thanks. According to airport officials, in the first quarter of this year, LAX accommodated a million and a half more passengers when compared to previous years. And while LAX is seeing a boost in passengers, Los Angeles fire stations are experiencing a boost of their own as critical services are restored at one firehouse in Los Feliz. Los Angeles Fire Station 35 is back to doing what it does best, serving the community and saving lives. That's because the station is now back to operating with full capacity.
Well, now we have a fully-staffed engine company with four people, and then we have a fully-staffed truck company, and then two fully-staffed rescues, one paramedic rescue and one BLS rescue, which allows us to be fully-staffed in the Los Feliz district.
LAFD and city officials came out recently to rededicate the station as a full-service task force.
I just think it's really important that we have good support from the fire department, and they do a wonderful job.
In 2011, during the height of the recession, the station had to cut one fire engine and four firefighters from service. But now that services have been restored, officials say firefighters can get back to doing their jobs.
In every neighborhood, they are, and they are extremely efficient, but they need support because not just the regular day-to-day activities. We all know what Dr. Lucy Jones says, "The big one will come," and these are our absolute first responders.
LAFD officials said Fire Station 35 was the first to get its resources returned because it's close to popular destinations such as Griffith Park, nightclubs, and several major hospitals. LAFD Chief Ralph Tarazza said even more support is on its way in the form of a nurse-practitioner unit to help respond to 911 calls.
This new unit will go out there and address the needs of that patient. It's just below a doctor level. They can do stitches, they can write prescriptions, they can take them to a substance abuse center, they can take them to a mental health clinic, all the things that we can't do right now.
Tarazza, who became chief of the department last year, said 54 new firefighters were also recently hired, and he said he will be requesting five new classes for the next fiscal year. With Fire Station 35 fully restored, LAFD now has 31 complete task forces. While some of the finest high school filmmakers in the county compete for exposure on the big screen, Gil Reyes reports from the Los Angeles Student Film Festival, a festival created by City Councilman Paul Krikorian.
Many of these filmmakers exhibit depth and creativity well beyond their high school years. Senior Riley Barris directed not your typical documentary, but a sockumentary to help the homeless.
We collect socks, undergarments, and hygiene products for the homeless, and we distribute them back to the homeless population in the streets. So it's about raising awareness and promoting donations for the homeless.
Her film, One of Thirty Seven, selected the screen at the Los Angeles Student Film Festival at El Portal Theater in North Hollywood. LA City Councilman Paul Krikorian created the program.
An opportunity to explore a different side of themselves that maybe they didn't even know was there. Some of these kids have never picked up a camera before they entered this festival. But at the same time, there are also some very serious filmmakers who are no doubt going to go on to a career in this industry, so we're helping to develop the next generation of filmmakers.
Animators, too. Students spent months painstakingly crafting their animated films using Adobe Photoshop and iMovie.
It was all hand-drawn, so it was just like picking pictures and putting it all together into one single stop motion.
It was so much work, but once seeing it like finished and crisp and clear and beautiful, I was like, yes, this is our baby, and I'm super excited to be able to present it here.
Students also got to wear many different hats, juggling duties as actors, directors, and producers.
We all helped produce it, we all helped edit it, and it was like one of the first things we ever created together and one of my first collaborations.
And hopefully not the last for these talented young filmmakers. In North Hollywood, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Only 37 student films were selected out of some 200 submissions throughout LA County. While it's one of the most critically acclaimed shows on television, and most of it was shot right here in LA. For all of its contributions to the city, City Council recognized the crew and creator of Mad Men. That's the focus of this week in tweets. The AMC hit Mad Men was honored by Councilmember Paul Krikorian at City Hall, declaring June 17th Mad Men Day in Los Angeles. On hand for the honor were show creator Matthew Weiner and other cast and crew members.
Nostalgia. It's delicate, but potent. It's a twinge.
Krikorian, who was also chair of the city's Film and TV Production Jobs Committee, tweeted, "Wednesday, June 17th is Mad Men Day in Los Angeles. This historic show created hundreds of TV jobs over the last eight years." Jajun Wilson at Pinky Avalon tweeted, "Congrats to Mad Men team being honored by LA City Council, declaring June 17th officially Mad Men AMC Day in LA." Our own Rasha Goel, who was at City Hall, tweeted a pic of Krikorian speaking at the podium of council chambers. She tweeted, "Mad Men creator, cast, crew recognize at LA City Council for keeping production in LA." Shot almost entirely in Los Angeles, Mad Men generated about $200 million to LA's economy during its seven-year run on AMC. Krikorian said the production created hundreds of steady jobs for actors, writers, and below-the-line production workers. Mad Men wrapped its seventh and final season this spring. And that's a look at this week in tweets. While US veterans are recognized, a historic community in Elysian Park gets its name carved in stone, and the bidding begins as city leaders ask internet companies to take part in their City Link LA initiative. All these stories and more in City Beat. More than 200 veterans and guests recently came out for the third annual Council District 12 Interfaith Breakfast at New Horizons in North Hills. This biannual event entitled "A Time for Gratitude" focused on celebrating the selfless service and sacrifice of all veterans, while at the same time exploring issues such as employment, housing, benefits, and mental health. A panel of federal, state, and local experts shared their knowledge and expertise with those in attendance. Councilmember Gil Sadio and the Department of Recreation and Parks unveiled a monument to recognize the historic Solano community within Elysian Park. The Solano community is the last remaining residential community within Elysian Park after several other neighborhoods were removed in the mid-1950s to make room for Dodger Stadium. The location of the monument is on a 0.10-acre portion of Elysian Park, which was donated to the City of Los Angeles in 2008. The City Council is now accepting bids from companies interested in offering free or low-cost internet access across the city. As part of the City Link LA program, the city is looking for internet providers that can offer reduced rate and free wireless internet service for low-income communities. The providers would also set up a network with 1 gigabyte or higher speeds for homes and businesses. In return, the internet providers would get access to city-owned assets and get other incentives, such as bulk lease rates on the city's fiber networks, as well as a streamlined permitting process. City officials said the goal is to offer internet access to everyone in the city, including those who cannot currently afford to get online.
The City of Los Angeles has made a serious commitment to this initiative and is deeply invested in making wide broadband access a reality.
Councilman Bon Blumenfield, who is spearheading the citywide internet effort, said the program would boost the local economy as well as "close the digital divide," a phrase that refers to a gap between those who can afford internet and those who cannot. Companies have until November 12th to submit their proposals. The city's Department of Recreation and Parks, Council Districts 1 and 14, recently hosted a luncheon and preview of the upcoming Lotus Festival taking place in July.
There'll be lots of live performances as well, really great dances and singing, and it'll be a great cultural experience for everyone.
The Lotus Festival is held in July to coincide with the blooming of the flowers that are cultivated on the lake beds by City Park crews. LA's first responders compete on the court to encourage summer safety. Gil Reyes has more from USC.
It's chief versus chief. Sporting different types of uniforms, the LA City Fire Department and the LA Police Department go head-to-head in a game of hoops.
Make some noise! To bring the community out and have a good time.
Fans pack USC's Galen Center for the Sixth Annual Safe Summer Tip-Off Basketball Game.
The main point is to tell the kids to have a safe summer, stay out of trouble, take up sports, and look to your police and fire departments if you ever need help for anything.
They'll be around when over 30 parks and rec centers stay open after hours for summer night lights. The program keeps kids off the streets and out of trouble with supervised activities like sports.
We see a spike in violent crime during the summer. The fire department sees a spike in medical calls, so we gotta emphasize, have a great summer, but have a safe summer.
The LAFD on fire early, but the LAPD shoots and scores to take the lead. Final score, 53-77. LAPD wins.
The police department always wins.
You'll win two if you play it safe. At USC's Galen Center, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Though LAFD appeared to be the crowd favorite at times, LAPD has won the annual game six years in a row. A mariachi music festival celebrates Latin music, a Peruvian guitarist soothes the soul, and what does Beethoven and the Beatles have in common? Find out in this week's Things to Do. Proudly reaching an important milestone, Mariachi USA celebrates its 26 years on Saturday, June 27th. It's the premier mariachi music festival and the only annual Latino-themed event at the Hollywood Bowl for 26 consecutive years. The festival will showcase top mariachi bands from the US and Mexico. The event features traditional folkloric dances and a legendary fireworks display that together have made the event a cultural icon in LA. The festival was created to give mariachi music a forum for artistic expression and a way to celebrate the rich musical traditions that so many have come to enjoy. Held at the Hollywood Bowl since its inception, the festival continues thrilling audiences of all generations. Rich musical traditions come to life at the Hollywood Bowl, located at 2301 Highland Avenue. For more details, visit mariachiusa.com. If you prefer the cool sounds of an acoustic guitar, check out the Latin music of the Sigur Hertado Band, performing at the Los Angeles County Museum of Art on June 27th. Peruvian guitarist and composer Sigur Hertado has been actively performing since the early 70s. He is a musical director and a solo artist who has produced and recorded seven albums, including "In My Mind" and "Tales From Home." Each of his compositions is paired with a story to illustrate the cultural and social context which brings his music to life. He was awarded the prestigious Durfee Master Musician Fellowship in 2001 and 2004. Lacma is located at 5905 Wilshire Boulevard. More details can be found at lacma.org. The joyous sounds of Beethoven's Seventh Symphony perfectly pairs with Beatles hits like Penny Lane, Sergeant Pepper, Hey Jude, and more. The great music comes alive on Sunday, June 28th, at the Walt Disney Concert Hall with Maestro Veneer and the California Philharmonic. Your spirits will swoop, soar, and sparkle as the music fills the air. Don't miss this fabulous opportunity to make your musical experience even more fulfilling. The Walt Disney Concert Hall is located at 111 South Grand Avenue. For more, go to calphil.com. And that's a look at some things to do. And that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay, and from all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
My players are like family. I have enough to worry about keeping them healthy. I don't need to worry whether the air is gonna hurt them. That's why I've downloaded the South Coast AQMD's new and improved app for smartphones. This app allows me to check the air quality before outdoor activity. It also helps me find alternative fueling stations for my car and learn more about other cleaner activities in my community. So, what are you waiting for? Get connected.
To download this app, just look for SCAQMD in your app store. South Coast AQMD, cleaning the air that we breathe.
Graffiti removal? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
Excellent. Cut, print, we're moving on. Hi, I'm Shane Woodson on the set of Cain and Abel here in Hollywood. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Okay, Andy, my actor is back on set, back in position.
Good morning, good morning. Good morning. I want to welcome everybody to your Los Angeles City Council. I'm Herb West, and I'll be your presiding officer for the day. We do not have a quorum as of yet, but we can start with our presentations. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m., and the public is welcome. So, we're gonna start with our presentation. In fact, Mr. Price, if I can get you to hold off for one second. Mr. Bonin, I know you have somewhere to go. Let's get started. Ladies and gentlemen, it's Mike Bonin from the 11th District. Michael, the floor is yours. We have former member Bill Rosendahl. Bill, welcome. Give Bill a... My former seatmate and a veteran.
Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, Mr. President. Not only are we joined this morning by my predecessor and former colleague to most, to many of you, Bill Rosendahl, but we're also joined here today by Superior Court Judge Katherine Mader. And Judge Mader is here today because the city is about to have a big loss. Retiring from city service in just a few days is Norman Cullough, who is her husband, who has served in various capacities in the city of Los Angeles for the past 10 years. He... Norman has served for 10 years. He worked first for Bill Rosendahl and then for me. He has served in various capacities as district director, as senior counsel, as field representative to Pacific Palisades and Brentwood, and has been, I would say, the go-to guy for any matter of complexity and controversy in our office. There are some of us who look at a complex and controversial situation, and we have many in my district, and might groan or might recoil. Norman smiles and jumps forward to the challenge. The more complex a situation, the more controversial the situation, the more he acts like an eight-year-old kid who's just solved a Rubik's Cube. He goes into controversy and conflict with an absolute delight. And as a result of that, over the past 10 years, Norman has spent lots of time in locked rooms with tenants and lawyers and preservationists and landowners hammering out a deal for the Lincoln Place Project in Venice. Because of that, Norman has spent lots of time in courtrooms in front of Judge Prager Son, trying to hammer out a vending ordinance that works for Venice Beach. And, you know, as a result, we've been blessed with some of the Venice gadflies have come here. We can thank Norman's good work for that. Norman has worked on projects as complex as the 405 widening project in the northern part of my district. He has worked on complex projects with other jurisdictions like the county and Santa Monica. And he has worked on quality-of-life issues constantly. He does that because he brought a tremendous credibility to the job. Because before he worked for Bill Rosendahl and before he helped Bill on his campaign, Norman was the chair of the Pacific Palisades Community Council. He understood the communities he worked in. He understood the values of those communities, and he really understood what made people tick. One of the things that made him so incredibly good at city service is he really thought very hard about what every person in the room really wants and figured out how to help them get there. When someone needed to vent and fume, Norman would gladly stand there and let them vent and fume at him, and has probably the thickest skin of anybody I've seen in city service. He is not without his flaws. Norman writes the longest briefing memo known to man. And because of his gift for complexity, he has, I've often thought, an ability to take a simple situation when trying to explain it to me and make it very, very complicated. But what Norman brought to city service is something that we all need to bring to city service. He brought a lot of the same skills that Mr. Labonge does. Norman understands the value of relationships. He nurtured his relationships with folks at the county or at the federal level. He worked very hard on veterans' issues and worked with the folks at the VA. He worked very hard with folks deep in the bureaucracy because he knew that knowing someone there was how to get something done. Norman also truly understood the value of being prepared. When we had a meeting on any subject, Norman came in with a file this thick of his detailed notes and knew more than anybody else in whatever room he was in about the issue going on. Norman always understood the value of team. He cherished and continues to every member of Bill's team and mine. Served as a mentor when needed, a friend when asked, and an encouraging voice whenever somebody needed it. Most importantly, though, Norman understands the value of family. He has a wonderful wife, he has beautiful children, and he's now a grandfather. And in his retirement, Norman is planning to spend time with each of his children and grandchildren. I kind of hope maybe I could keep him on sort of on a contract basis and work on a few of the complex projects. But in just a few days, he's leaving on his first trip, and he's gonna spend time traveling with each of his children because he really understands, as I said, the value of family. Norman, it has been an incredible pleasure working with you. You have inspired me, you've taught me, and man, you have helped me immensely. And I've worked with you as a colleague in Bill's office, and it's been an honor to have you sort of launched me my first two years in office. I want to thank you. I think Mr. Rosendahl would like to say a word or two.
Gotta be careful when you give me a mic, you know? He might say a word. First of all, as you noticed, Mike was not reading anything. It came from the heart. He laid it out, what Norman did. When Norman and I first met each other, I knew his wife, the Honorable Kathy Mader, who was our first inspector general here. But, you know, Norman was head of the neighborhood council, and I assumed my opponent, who was head of the Brentwood council, it would go that way. But we went and had lunch, and he started talking about things, I started talking about things. Later in the day, he called me and endorsed me, and I said, "Oh, my God, this is great." And so, he got involved in my campaign. And then when I won, I said, "I really need somebody who can walk into the lawyer's office, who understands that world. I don't want to be intimidated by the lawyers. I'm the councilman." So, there was Norman. He came on the payroll, and he would go there and establish relationships that were critical to doing the job. You know, you should have a lawyer on your staff or two, retired or whatever they are, but have them so that you can do your job as a council member. It's really important. And I also want to comment quickly about Tom Labonge. I ran for office because Tom called me one day, and he said, "Run for office." I said, "Oh, please, give me a break. Politics is corrupt, and these people are ridiculous." And I kept thinking about it, and I said, "Why not?" I'm at that point in my... I was 59 years old. But Tom was the one, he talked me into it. Now, he's leaving. It's a shame for the city to lose him from the power position in the council. He's done an incredible job in that, but his day isn't done either. He's gonna spend some time with his wife and his two kids, and God knows where he's gonna show up next, but I expect great things. Thank you, Tom Labonge, for everything you've done for everybody. Appreciate it. Many of you, I have long-term relationships. I just look into your faces and remember stories of times we were together and did things. Kereth drew all over the news these days, and I like that. You have that independent streak in you. And, now, Gil, I mean, for you to take on this strategy and question it on homelessness shows you've got a lot of integrity and a lot of guts. Look, Mike's gonna do a great job on that issue. He's been doing a great job on it all the years I've known him, been with me, but it's one of the toughest. It's like this tie, you don't know this, but this I wore when I held a hoof for a couple of lesbians who were becoming married many years ago. And you'll see me in pictures historically, and I found the tie this morning, and I said, "I'm gonna wear it." Because marriage equality, for a person like me, you know, if I want to get married, I should be allowed to get married. It's all about love and being with each other. So, we're in a very historic moment, and here I am before the city council, where many of you know, I came out on my television show in '95, so I'd been out 10 years, and so I was publicly gay and all that. And when I got elected, I got elected as the first openly gay guy to the city. So, there are a lot of memories around this table of people I worked with. Jose, I don't, I mean, if I gotta be careful, I didn't mention this or that, but I just love you all. And thank you, Michael, especially you, for the incredible leadership you're doing now and for the incredible job ahead of you that's challenging that I know you're gonna do well.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Norman Cullough.
Thank you very much. It's really, as you can tell, Mike brought, Bill brought me into government, and it's been a pleasure to serve the city. I really have a great deal of pride watching Mike transition from being a staffer to being the voice as an elected. And I particularly... And I'm particularly proud of the leadership he's taking on a variety of issues, the last of which, quite notably, is his stepping forward on the homelessness issue. So all I want to say is to everybody, thank you for letting me be part of this. I've really enjoyed it. Be nice to each other. Acknowledge each other. Talk to one each other on one-on-one basis. Make those connections. And make it work for the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you for a job. Thank you for a job well done. You know what, Mr. Clerk? Why don't we quickly run through the agenda? We do have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonner...
And fix the sound system. Anyway, call the roll.
Bloomingfield, Bonner, Buscay, Noc, Sadio, Alguin, Fuentes, Wezar, Carrasco, Correa, Labonge, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, West, and 12 members present in a quorum. Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Martinez moves. Correct. Seconds next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Fuente moves. Wezar, seconds next.
Mr. President, there is a recommendation from the Department of Building and Safety to continue Item 1B to July 28.
So without objection, that'll be the order?
For it gets her items one through five, our items notice for public hearing. For Item 1A, the Department of Building and Safety recommends that this matter be received and filed inasmuch as the property was determined to be an owner-occupied, single-family dwelling and thus exempt from lien processing.
Okay, that's fine, and that'll be the order. Do you have cards?
Yes, sir. We have cards on Items 1, 2, 3, and 5.
Okay, let's vote on the remaining item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you, sir. Next set of items, Mr. Clerk?
There are Items 6 through 19. There are items for which public hearings have been held. Committee reports for Items 9, 13, and 19 have been circulated. Items 17 and 18 should be held on the desk until such time as the committee reports for those items.
Okay, let's hold those two items. Mr. Sadio?
Item 19, the report has been circulated. We will be adopting the CIO report in lieu of the Housing and Community Investment Report.
So if that's circulated, Mr. Clerk, can we go on and vote on it?
Yes, we should vote on that matter individually, and that's a two-vote matter. The first on whether to substitute.
Okay, so let's set that aside. Vote on the other items that are before us. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. Now can we deal with Mr. Sadio's? Mr. Wezar?
Number 19, forthwith, please.
Wait, no, we're getting to that right now. Correct, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you said this is two votes?
Yes, sir. The first on whether to substitute. The CIO recommendations...
Okay, so let's take that vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Now let's vote on the substitution, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now we will open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Fourthwith, per Mr.... At Mr. Wezar's request. That brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings us to Items 20 through 22. There are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
So without objection, those items are now before us? Do we have cards?
Yes, sir. Cards on all three.
Okay, let's move on.
That takes council back to presentation, sir.
Okay. Now, before... I have a very, very special presentation today. Where it relates to a group of heroes that are in our midst, the Tuskegee Airmen. You may want to give them a round of applause. And I think I'm going to ask Ms. Martinez to come spell me. I think, based on that round of applause, that I should just take care of these gentlemen right now. So, Ms. Martinez?
First of all, let me say that I've been blessed to do a lot of things in my life. Yeah, okay, yeah, I want to see my orange tie. Thank you for turning on... Thank you for turning on the television set. But rarely do you have the opportunity to speak about individuals who help shape this nation and maybe the world, individuals that have done more for civil rights and equal rights than a lot of people recognize. Today, colleagues and guests, I bring before you members of the Los Angeles chapter of the Tuskegee Airmen Incorporated. Give them another round. They're from the Los Angeles chapter, and the Los Angeles chapter was founded in February of 1974. It is one of 55 chapters throughout this great nation. I want to take a moment and recognize Mr. Walter Crenshaw, who is... He's right before me in the maroonish color hat. He is 105 years old. And if I could have Mr. Bruington. Mr. Bruington, please come and stand beside me. Members, their mission is to preserve the historical legacy of the first African-American military aviators in the U.S. Armed Forces. At a time of war, for a country that treated many of them like second-class citizens, they felt that it was important to stand up, step up to the plate, and risk their lives to protect the American dream. Because they knew that someday, one day, individuals like Mr. Price, or Mr. Wezar, or myself, would have the opportunity to do things that maybe they did not have the opportunity to do. I want you to envision back in the '40s, when there were military officers and men that were not of color, that never believed that they had the intelligence to do the job. Many of them did not want them to do the job. Many of them felt that it was a joke to have a unit of black aviators. But by the time the war was over, many of them begged to have these men at their wings protecting their lives. They proved to the world that it was not about the color of your skin, it was about your brain, it was about your courage, and it was about your dedication to your country. These men are an example of everything that each and every one of us should want to be. This nation owes you such a debt that it cannot be articulated. We have widows from many of the Tuskegee Airmen that are here with us today. They can tell you the stories of what life was like. Here you are, risking your life, some of us did not make it, and still being treated a second-class citizen in your own country. And I... On Wednesday, members, we'll have a little conversation about race in this council chambers. And I just want you to remember, people that are here, like the ones that are here to my right, that risked their lives so that everybody that's seated around this horseshoe and at this... In this audience today could walk freely and do whatever the Lord gave them the ability to do. It is with great honor, and I'm humbled, to recognize the Tuskegee Airmen Los Angeles chapter. And I have with me their great president, Ron Bruington, that's going to say a few words on behalf of these heroes. Members and people in the audience, you may never be surrounded by this many heroes again in your lives. Give them another round of applause. This nation thanks you. This council thanks you. And its president thanks you.
Thank you, sir. Oh, no, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Bring up my neighboring constituent. Come on, Brother Lumpkin. Give my constituent a round of applause. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, and to you and to the members of the Los Angeles City Council. We sincerely thank you for giving tribute to those men and women known as the Tuskegee Airmen, who gallantly served our country during World War II. The Tuskegee Airmen were the first African-American military aviators to serve in the United States Armed Forces. It should be noted that of the 993 pilots who graduated from flight training at Tuskegee, Alabama, that nearly 50 of them called Los Angeles their home. And also, there were other hundreds of other Los Angelinos who performed other duties. Today, we brought eight documented original Tuskegee Airmen, or DODAs as we call them. There were 19,000 persons who volunteered and were called Tuskegee Airmen. You met Mr. Crenshaw. Others today include 95-year-old Bob Friend, who flew a Redtail pilot. He flew nearly 150... Mr. Friend flew 150 combat missions and shot down two enemy aircraft. We also brought Jerry Hodges. He's a B-25 bomber pilot. We brought Wilbur... Bill Johnson, a fighter pilot. Levi Thornhill, a crew chief, who later became a pilot himself. Robert Taylor, an air traffic controller. Henry Polite, an aircraft engineer. And standing next to me, Ted Lumpkin, an intelligence officer.
Thank you very much. Again, my name is Ted Lumpkin. I was an intelligence officer for the 100th Fighter Squadron. And more importantly, I was president of the L.A. chapter from 2007 to through 2011. And we had... Lonely Eagles have become a part of our activity since that time. Lonely Eagles are those that have passed away. We have eight of our members here, those that... And the thing that I like about that is that we are here and we can be seen rather than viewed. Whether you know it or not, that's very important to me. Now, Herb, I want to thank you... As a brother, a member of the Alpha Phi Alpha fraternity, and thank you for your words and the recognition of our organization and of the Tuskegee Airmen. One of the things that we're trying to do is to promote the legacy of the Tuskegee Airmen and what it means to this country. We want it to continue, and we really appreciate the honor and the applause and what you have done for us today. Thank you again.
Mr. President, on this day, we also brought three Tuskegee Airmen widows, Geraldine Lehman, Sally Pratt, and Helen McKnight. We also brought a very avid supporter of the Tuskegee Airmen. His name is Charles Floyd Johnson. He was the producer of the hit movie Red Tails. He is also currently, for the last 13 years, the executive producer of the number-one television show NCIS. Mr. Charles Floyd Johnson. Mr. President, in conclusion, many of the Tuskegee Airmen are not physically here today. As you know, we've lost many, many of them. But they are here in spirit, and we thank you for that. Sir, we humbly thank you and the members of the Los Angeles City Council for honoring them today and making this a memorable occasion. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. We will go around this way.
And thank you very much, Mr. President, for that wonderful recognition of our Tuskegee Airmen. Thank you very much. We're going to be followed by a presentation from Mr. Curran Price. If you're ready. Mr. Price, welcome.
Thank you, Madam President. Members, today I am joined by the official mayor of the BET Experience, Tyrese Gibson. Today, we kick off the entertainment festival that will be taking place at L.A. Live and the L.A. Convention Center. But I also want to honor this talented young man for his charitable work and his commitment to our community. Born and raised in Watts, Tyrese first gained national attention in an iconic 1995 Coca-Cola commercial. I know you remember that one. Since then, he has had success as a recording artist, a model, an author, producer, actor. Most recently, starring in the seventh installment of the Fast and Furious franchise as Roman. Early on, Tyrese had the desire to give back to the community, with the goal of building safe haven for youth to gather and to pursue positive activities. And he continues to work actively to ensure that youth from communities like the one I represent are given the same opportunities more privileged youth receive. This weekend, there will be a full-court press at L.A. Live and the Convention Center with performers like Nicki Minaj, Neo, Tanashi, Snoop Dogg, Ice Cube, and Kendrick Lamar. And the gentleman standing beside me today will be your host, providing an inside look at this year's BET Experience from now until the showtime of the BET Awards. Tyrese will also be one of the coaches for the Sprite Celebrity Basketball Game held Saturday. That's gonna include French Montana, Chris Brown, Snoop, Meek Mill, Floyd Mayweather, Wale, and more competing for this year's title. I should note that the BET Fan Fest at the Convention Center is free, so I encourage all of you members to come on down and invite your constituents to come as well. Tyrese, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, we want to thank you for all you do to the community, and we look forward to your future endeavors.
Good morning. How are you? Good morning, everybody. I am very humbled by this moment all across the board, especially being in the presence of the men and women who have served our country and the Tuskegee Airmen and the Red Tails and their widows. I just want to say, being as that I was born and raised in Watts, 1978 Martin Luther King Hospital, I felt like my life from the beginning came into this world with a sense of purpose. And being as that I do have the voice of the people and the voice of the young people, other than being here to be recognized as the mayor of the BET Experience, I'm also inviting every council member to... I'm ready to talk. I'm ready to have conversations about getting more involved in the city, what I could do to use my influence in this God-given stage to make a difference. Use me up. I'm here. I'm ready. Give me a sense of direction, and I won't let you down. I do have a few things on this paper that I gotta get to. I am honored to receive this proclamation from the Los Angeles City Council. Thank you, Councilman Price, President, and the members of the council for recognizing the service that I give on behalf of the people in this community. And thank you to BET. Thank you for BET for 20 years. Ever since I stepped off of that bus, crazy thing is I actually shot that Coca-Cola commercial downtown L.A. So being here for this is 20 years later. It's kinda special. I also like to say thank you to AEG for extending the title of mayor of the 2015 BET Experience. This is the first time they've ever done this, and I am honored. I am committed to giving back and serving those in need to the great city that I was born and raised in, Los Angeles. I look forward to this wonderful BET Experience. Thank you for your time. God bless you, and God bless our America.
The chair recognizes Mr. Buscagno.
Thank you, Madam President. Tyrese, Tyrese. Oh, wait. Big smiles. I love you. We love you. You know, oftentimes, in the community of Watts... I'm right here. Oftentimes, in the community of Watts, we go to our developments at Imperial Courts, the Jordan Downs, and Dickerson Gardens throughout the community and let our young people know in Watts, never forget where you came from. Never forget your roots. And you have done just that. You highlight the importance of the Watts community. And you recognize through your efforts in building up the Watts Foundation, which its ultimate goal is to build youth community centers throughout the Watts community. We thank you for your passion to serve. We thank you for your commitment to our teens. Ultimately, our goal is to ensure that our kids safely gather and pursue positive activities, encouraging self-worth and improvement. And that's what you helped in 2000. And you're giving us direction on how we can utilize your success and your love for Watts. I'm here with Mike Scholl, our general manager of the Department of Recreation and Parks. We'd love to have you come into Watts on 109th Street, or even at the Watts Cultural Crescent that the department oversees at the Watts Towers, and bring your success story to Watts and show the boys and girls that it is possible to be born and raised in Watts and to be successful. We need you. We love you. And we need your continued encouragement to our boys and girls and our young men and women in the Watts community. Thank you, Mr. Price, for bringing Tyrese here. Tyrese, we love you.
Mr. Gibson, it wasn't gonna take too long before they put you to work, see? That's what happens around here. Mr. Labonge.
Well, thank you very much, Tyrese. I'm very proud of anybody from Los Angeles. And what high school did you go to? Lock, he's a saint, ladies and gentlemen, he's a saint. And Locke High School had the greatest marching band in the city's history. And one of my efforts at post-council, I got four more days, five more days left, and I'm termed out, is to help the Beyond the Bell program at L.A. Unified for the marching bands and everything. There's no school like Locke High School, and the work that they're doing there, Tyrese, it's so important. And Mr. Buscagno, you said it's right. There's nothing like Watts. Congratulations. And I hope you have a moment, Mr. Price. I'll handle your seat if you need. Go to the Tom Bradley Tower. Go to the top of this city hall. Look above this great city that you're born in. Congratulations for the special recognition. Have a great weekend.
Mr. Clerk, we're gonna move on to item 21 for a reward motion. I understand the family is here. Mr. Blumenfield.
Could I have Carol come join me? Have the family come join? Colleagues, here today to ask for a reward motion for a crime. This one is a little unusual from what we've seen...
If I can have the audience, please keep their voices down, please. This is a very special rewards motion for Mr. Blumenfield. Go ahead, sir.
No, it's, you know, usually when we're dealing with reward motions, we're dealing with crimes that have happened recently. This actually has to do with a crime that happened back in 1977. On the evening of March 9, 1977, Howard Steinler was in an altercation... Steinler was in an altercation with two suspects on Killian and Linley Avenue in what is now my district. Unfortunately, he was found dead in his vehicle. At the time of his death, he was well-known. He was a prominent boxing manager and promoter. He owned the Main Street Gym in downtown. It was one of those unsolved crimes. It still is an unsolved crime. And in '09, this council put forward a reward motion. Recently, the LAPD has come to me saying there's some new information, and they want us to basically reaffirm that old reward motion with the hopes that this crime, that was 38 years old, may have a chance of being solved and provide some relief to the family. So we've got Detective Nancy Nelson here. Detective, I don't know if you want to say a few words? And we have the daughter of the victim, Carol Steinler, and the granddaughter, Christina Davis. Did you want to say, Ms. Steinler?
I just want to thank Mr. Blumenfield for doing this or even considering this. And Bernard Parks, who's been with me since the beginning, he remembers it from the beginning because he was very instrumental in a lot of stuff that happened before. The reason that this is so important, it was my father's birthday when I got the call from Detective Nelson to tell me that there was a new lead in the case after 38 years. And it's very hard to walk around as a victim's daughter and never have closure and know that my father... For, I know, like Bernard Parks, I think, knew my dad and knew how feisty he was. And I know he's not at rest. And until this crime is solved, he will never be at rest. And with this, maybe, maybe, he'll become the victor instead of the victim. And that's what I'm hoping. And I'm hoping to get some closure in my life. And I appreciate it so much that you would even consider this. Thank you.
So colleagues, I'm gonna ask for you to, and I vote, to reaffirm the reward motion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Blumenfield. We do have cards on this item. Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh passes. Wayne Spindler? Wayne Spindler, are you here? Juan Akala? He passes. Mr. Herman? Is Mr. Herman here? That concludes our cards for this item. Mr. Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you very much. Item passes. We're gonna resume presentations. Mr. Fuentes?
Good morning, colleagues. This morning, we are honoring and celebrating City Plants, formerly the Million Trees Los Angeles Program, not just on their one-year anniversary, but they recently received the 2015 Gold Leaf Award
So colleagues, what you see there is Arbor Day 2015,
for Outstanding Landscape Beautification Projects by the Western Chapter of the International Society of Arborlo Culture. Give them a big round of applause. City Plants leads a tremendous mission in the city of Los Angeles in making sure that we have lots of trees in Los Angeles.
the one-year anniversary of City Plants, and the mayor and I planting over 100 trees
And we've got an example here of a recent tree planting that we did in Arbor Day.
in the communities of Silmar,
If we can go ahead and play that, that would be great.
around Silmar High School, Silmar Park. Not just beautifying Silmar, but trees have such an important role, Mr. Labonge, in the health of the city of Los Angeles. We all know that we're experiencing some of the hottest times of our recorded history in the state, in the city of Los Angeles. We understand that it's the driest time, Mr. Weezer, of our state's history. We also know, for the first time ever, we're not receiving any water deliveries from our very own Los Angeles Aqueduct. It's a long way to say that we've gotta adapt to the future. We've gotta figure out how to plan for the climate's change. And the way that we're doing that is we're making sure that we are being smart about our landscaping in Los Angeles. Trees are green, and those are good. Aesthetic lawns, if you can afford to have them, not so good. Trees are good. And so we want to make sure that we continue to water trees. Not only do they clean and cool the air, they provide a lot of relief and aesthetically are really important for our community. So we are very excited about celebrating what it is that they've done. In this last year, they have planted and distributed more than 19,000 trees in the city of Los Angeles. More importantly, they're engaging the community to the importance about climate, and they're making sure that they're engaging not just folks who already know this, but people who need to learn how important it is that we maintain a very healthy community in Los Angeles. I'm honored today to be joined with our very own Deputy Mayor Barbara Romero to say a few words.
Thank you, and good morning, city council members. And I want to just especially say thank you to Councilmember Felipe Fuentes for partnering with us on Arbor Day. It was, as you indicated, it is a special and unique way to educate our young people about the importance of trees. I have to say, it was my son's... It was the opportunity for my son to plant his first tree in the San Fernando Valley. So thank you very much. In the coming years, L.A. faces two critical issues with water, water supply and water quality. And when it comes to solving them, as my son would say, trees are our friends and our superheroes. So over the past year, City Plants has planted, as you indicated, 19,000 trees. But we have focused, in the mayor's office, to work with City Plants to plant in low-canopy neighborhoods and ensuring that those trees survive. We want to promote sustainability, energy efficiency, and stormwater capture. But most importantly, using this opportunity to create jobs and healthy lifestyles when we plant the trees. We had over... City Plants helped get deploy over 400 volunteers, including getting the mayor's volunteer corps out there. And we reached over 12,000 unique Angelinos. City Plants is a unique partnership that thrives for all of us to support. I want to thank some of the groups, LACC, LABT, KYCC, Northeast Trees, Fuego Tech, and Tree People, and some of the supporters, DWP, Board of Public Works, and most importantly, city council. Thank you, and let's keep planting trees together.
Colleagues, we really need to do more about looking to trees as a resource. In Australia, for example, the Lord Mayor, Robert Doyle, can walk you through any of the parks in Australia and Melbourne and tell you the species of trees. He can also tell you that they used it as a resource to help reach their goals of cooling their city by five degrees. They actually identified historical wind patterns. They looked to where they could reclaim water. And then they planted groves of trees to lower the temperature of the city. Because we all know that the difference between life and death in a heat storm is relief on the third day of a heat storm. So with us today, we have Elizabeth Skuratz of City Plants to say a few words and why City Plants is so important. Elizabeth?
Thank you very much. My name is Elizabeth Skurzat, and I'm the program director for City Plants. And first, I've gotta say, it's absolutely... you for that. City Plants' mission is to grow the future that LA deserves. We are a team of what I think are some of the best nonprofit organizations and city agencies, and we are constantly investing in a green, sustainable future for LA because when you plant a tree, you're thinking about what happens thirty, forty, fifty years from now. It's a privilege to work for the people of Los Angeles. Those of us who work here in City Hall and for City Hall are in the business of building legacies. We build and care for the roads, bridges, streetlights, and other infrastructure that makes it possible for a city of four million people to live together in the same place. And I think our program is special in that the legacy we plant is alive. Our infrastructure is green because trees grow and breathe just like we do, and it's quite possible that the trees that we plant today will outlive us. There's nothing more rewarding than walking past a planting years later and seeing people take refuge in the shade. And that result takes a lot of hard work. It takes a lot of walking the streets, digging holes, talking to residents. And I'd like to introduce you to the people who are in the trenches every day making that result possible with their hard work. We have six nonprofit planting partners that work with us. The Los Angeles Conservation Corps. The Los Angeles Beautification Team. The Koreatown Youth and Community Center. Tree People. And the Fuego Tech Fire Rangers. And of course, we have our own City Plants staff here in City Hall. This program wouldn't be possible without the support and efforts of key city departments, including the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, who's a major supporter through their energy efficiency program. The LA Bureau of Sanitation, which contributes concrete cuts and is always looking for new The Bureau of Street Services through the Urban Forestry Division, who do all of the And then Wreckin Parks, who not only give us land through their Griffith Park nursery, but they're always willing to get up and help us out for an event. And of course, we're located under the Board of Public Works with the support of our wonderful commissioners. And I want to thank you, Councilmember Fuentes. You have been a champion for your district. Get closer. Stepping up and providing resources, not only for Arbor Day at all of us to middle school, but also for Foothill Boulevard and Van Nuys. You really put your money where your mouth is. And your support has been incredible, and your constituents are reaping the benefits. We'd also like to thank Mayor Eric Garcetti and his wonderful, dedicated staff. Their unwavering support has grown this program by leaps and bounds when we need it. Lastly, we want to thank Blue Shield of California and Mission Hills Nissan for making Arbor Day such a resounding success. Without the support of LA's Business Community, City Plants would not exist. And we want to thank you, council. We are humbled by this award, and we truly appreciate the recognition. Thank you.
There you have it, colleagues. City Plants, Los Angeles. Make sure you avail yourselves of these great people, these organizations. We need to transform Los Angeles so that we make sure that every single drop counts, Mr. Buscaino. And the way that you do that is by planting more trees. We've got this beautiful resolution here. Deputy Mayor Elizabeth, there we go. Everybody smile real quick. Greg Good. All right, give him a big round of applause. Thank you.
Mr. Fuentes? Mr. Labonge, not yet, sir? Just a second. The chair recognizes Mr. Corretts, who's on the queue. Thank you, Mr. Labonge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I wanted to thank Councilmember Fuentes for bringing this important organization to City Hall for recognition and for the good work you've done in planting trees in your district. City Plants has helped us from not dropping the ball and continuing the tradition started not long ago with the Million Trees Initiative. As Mr. Fuentes said, it's especially critical because in a time of global warming, it's really going to be the tree canopies that help us keep our city cool. And also, I know you're very focused on the drought and the fact that that may be a long-term situation, and planting drought-tolerant native plants and trees and how important that is. So this is a critical organization to the city. We thank you for keeping the city beautiful and water efficient and keep up the great work.
Chair recognizes Mr. Labonge.
About the 7th District, it goes right into the Angeles National Forest, so there's a lot of work to do within the forest as well. It's sad with the drought and all the other challenges and the beetle. There's over a thousand dead trees in Griffith Park, which is so sad and nowhere there is. But to plant trees, which some of you have, is one of the most worthy things. Sharon Romano from Holly Drive, thirty years ago, wanted to do something about her neighborhood and created all what you have. So I just wanted to thank you and salute you and the richest people in the world who have dirt in their fingers because they went into the soil of this mother earth and gave it life again. Thank you all very much, Barbara Romero. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Mr. Buscaino?
Thank you, Mr. Fuentes. Settle down there. I know you want to get going, but we need to recognize you, Felipe, for your partnership with City Plants and of course, our Commissioner Romero, renowned, now a deputy mayor, Barbara Romero, overseeing all city services. Thank you so much for your leadership on this. And I know you mentioned, Felipe, that the importance of council colleagues to take advantage of this incredible program. I'm just proud. I stand here with Gabby Medina, who works alongside Elizabeth, and KYCC, LACC, and City Plants. And Council District 15, of course, the southern tip of Council District 15, we're surrounded by heavy industrial, and we need to plant more trees to help improve our environment. And we're proud to plant, to date, over three hundred trees in Council District 15, and we thank you for helping us lead that effort. So, Mr. Fuentes, thank you for giving us this opportunity to stand and recognize the great work that City Plants is doing each and every day in our city. Thank you.
Mr. Weezer?
Thank you, and again, I just want to commend Mr. Fuentes for recognizing the incredible work that City Plants is doing. You know, the planting of trees and plants throughout the city should not be underestimated. It brings incredible benefits, as Mr. Fuentes so eloquently stated. And when we look at the direction of the city for many years, where it went from a largely agricultural one to thinking that concrete was better, and now we're moving back to planting trees and plants and greening, it's a huge challenge. But when we've done it on places like Colorado Boulevard or other places, it's just brought not only good air quality and better for the environment, it helps local businesses as well because the aesthetics, the beauty, it's also an economic development driver as we green the city some more. So thank you for your work, all of you. We should be congratulating. Thank you, Mr. Fuentes.
Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have worked with every one of these organizations over the years throughout the 13th District, and it's just so great to see you all being honored. And City Plants and working with Barbara Romero in two previous iterations over the years, we're amongst family, we're friends, and the difference that you're making in our communities are profound, not only enhancing the quality of life in our neighborhoods, but increasing property value by twenty percent by having a canopy in your neighborhood. So it's good economic sense, it's good environmental sense. But I also want to just give a special shout out to Felipe Fuentes and your leadership on the environment. It's outstanding, it's amazing, well done, and congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Mr. Corretts?
I just want to add one thing because we've touched on it, which is just a reminder to anyone here, anyone watching, that as we let our lawns go brown or rip them out, we're not only having trees die on Griffith Park and the Angeles National Forest, but we're having some trees die on residents' properties because they don't know, even if you stop watering your grass, every once in a while, you still have to water your trees in this kind of a massive drought that we're in. So please don't let trees die on your own property and give them some water once in a while. And thank you again for recognizing this important group.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fuentes. Congratulations. Mr. Clerk, has item, reports for item seventeen been circulated yet?
Yes, ma'am. Seventeen and eighteen.
Okay, then why don't we take up item seventeen? Item seventeen, Mr. Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Item passes. Mr. Clerk, item eighteen? Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Item passes. Mr. Labonge for presentation? Mr. Weezer and Mr. Corretts, are you both ready? Mr. Labonge is waiting for his honorees.
Ready.
Well, thank you, Madam President and colleagues. Today, I'd like to honor the outstanding and accomplished life of Agnes Stevens, who passed away on February thirteenth of this year, but left behind an amazing legacy through her educational nonprofit, School on Wheels. Born as the youngest of five children in Boston on June thirteenth, nineteen thirty-five, Agnes led a life that touched and enhanced the lives of all who had the privilege to know her or to benefit from her selfless philanthropic work. She spent eighteen years of her life as a Mary Noll sister, teaching in Chicago, New York, and in Little Tokyo. Following this chapter of her life, she spent the next twenty-two years teaching in the Pico Rivera Public School System. Although she retired relatively early, her love of teaching and community drew her back to a part-time role in a school in Venice where she greeted and aided schoolchildren who came from a homeless shelter. This experience highlighted the unique educational needs of homeless children in LA and instilled in her an unwavering desire to help them and give them hope for a better life. Agnes's passion for helping these underprivileged schoolchildren inspired her to single-handedly found the nonprofit, School on Wheels, in nineteen ninety-three. Twenty-two years later, School on Wheels continues to thrive and help Los Angeles's homeless children. The past year alone, School on Wheels has organized for over one thousand eight hundred volunteers to tutor over three thousand homeless students. During the same time period, the organization has also distributed over five thousand backpacks, school supplies, uniforms, and bus tokens. Agnes's empowering work did not go unnoticed. In two thousand eight, she received the World Children's Prize for the Rights of the Child, following a global vote consisting of seventeen million children in one hundred countries. To defenders of children's rights, this award is known as the Nobel Prize of that field. The accolades didn't stop there. In two thousand nine, she was voted as the LA Weekly's Person of the Year and was awarded the Minerva Award from California's First Lady at the time, Maria Shriver, who acknowledged Agnes as a hero on the front lines of humanity. She was also the recipient of the Children's Freedom Award, Hero Award, Courage Award, Cool Women Award, and the Citizen of the Year Award, along with a certificate of commendation from the U.S. Senate and a certificate of appreciation from the city of Los Angeles. She lived an extraordinary life that has given both hope and education to thousands of homeless children in Los Angeles. So on behalf of the city and all of its officials, it's an honor for me to join in recognizing the outstanding life of Agnes Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts. And we're also here today to not only honor and pay tribute to Agnes, but also to honor the organization that she founded, an incredible organization that continues to provide much-needed assistance to homeless children and their families. And you know, often, when we talk about the many impacts of homelessness on individuals, we forget about the children who are affected. And homelessness has a devastating impact on children's educational opportunities. Students experiencing homelessness typically change schools frequently. This can impact learning, as students adjust to new environments, new classes, new teachers, and classmates. Each school change is estimated to set a student back academically in the average of four to six months, and twenty-eight percent of homeless children will attend three or more different schools in a year. The loss of home can be intensely traumatic, as you can probably imagine, impacting children and young people's social and intellectual well-being. And that's where this incredible program that we are honoring today comes in. Schools on Wheels core programs are designed to address the key barriers that stand between homeless children and the education they need and deserve. Some of the services Schools on Wheels provides, as Mr. Corretts noted, include everything from helping kids and families gather needed records like birth certificates, immunization records, transfer papers, and complete the paperwork needed to get kids re-enrolled in school. And they do that all in one day versus weeks it can take without their assistance. School on Wheels helps get students placed in needs-based special classes or schools and helps arrange any testing necessary to determine those needs. And as you all know, oftentimes, it's very difficult to navigate the educational pipeline, and with Schools on Wheels, they provide that parent role that many of these kids so desperately need. They provide computers and scholarships and much, much more. Schools on Wheels' greatest impact is provided by volunteers who come from all backgrounds and professions to teach, mentor, and assist the educational life of a homeless child. At this time, let's give a big round of applause to all the volunteers who give of their time to support Schools on Wheels. Thank you so, so much. And so, colleagues, we stand here in thanks and praise of Schools on Wheels and all they're doing for one of the most vulnerable populations you can imagine, and that's homeless children. Thank you, Schools on Wheels, and congratulations, and much thanks to Agnes. Thank you so much.
And now, we're going to hear from Catherine Meek, the executive director, and afterwards, Josh Fein, president of the board.
Thank you very much. Thank you, council members, Weezer and Corretts, honorable council members. I'd also like to thank John Pellico, Steve Garcia, and Gilbert Mares. Agnes Stevens would have been honored to receive this tribute today, not for herself, but for her homeless students. Agnes never really cared about awards and accolades. She cared about the enormous problem of homeless children in Los Angeles. Almost fourteen thousand students identified as homeless by the Los Angeles Unified School District, and over a hundred and sixty-three thousand children homeless in just the school districts that we serve in Southern California. We hear a lot about the growing homeless population, but no one, no one talks about the children. We can't continue to ignore the shocking... This can impact learning, as students adjust to new environments, new classes, new teachers, and classmates. Each school change is estimated to set a student back academically in the average of four to six months, and twenty-eight percent of homeless children will attend three or more different schools in a year. The loss of home can be intensely traumatic, as you can probably imagine, impacting children and young people's social and intellectual well-being. And that's where this incredible program that we are honoring today comes in. Schools on Wheels' core programs are designed to address the key barriers that stand between homeless children and the education they need and deserve. Some of the services Schools on Wheels provides, as Mr. Corretz noted, include everything from helping kids and families gather needed records like birth certificates, immunization records, transfer papers, and complete the paperwork needed to get kids re-enrolled in school, and they do that all in one day versus weeks it can take without their assistance. School on Wheels helps get students placed in needs-based special classes or schools and helps arrange any testing necessary to determine those needs. And as you all know, oftentimes, it's very difficult to navigate the educational pipeline, and with Schools on Wheels, they provide that parent role that many of these kids so desperately need. They provide computers and scholarships and much, much more. Schools on Wheels' greatest impact is provided by volunteers who come from all backgrounds and professions to teach, mentor, and assist the educational life of a homeless child. At this time, let's give a big round of applause to all the volunteers who give of their time to support Schools on Wheels. Thank you so, so much. And so, colleagues, we stand here in thanks and praise of Schools on Wheels and their doing, and all they're doing for one of the most vulnerable populations you can imagine, and that's homeless children. Thank you, Schools on Wheels, and congratulations, and much thanks to Agnes. Thank you so much. And now, and now we're going to hear from Catherine Meek, the executive director, and afterwards Josh Fein, president of the board.
Thank you very much. Thank you, council members, Weiser and Corretz, honorable council members. I'd also like to thank John Pellico, Steve Garcia, and Gilbert Mares. Agnes Stevens would have been honored to receive this tribute today, not for herself, but for our homeless students. Agnes never really cared about awards and accolades. She cared about the enormous problem of homeless children in Los Angeles. Almost fourteen thousand students identified as homeless by the Los Angeles Unified School District, and over a hundred and sixty-three thousand children homeless in just the school districts that we serve in Southern California. We hear a lot about the growing homeless population, but no one, no one talks about the children. We can't continue to ignore these shocking statistics. We can all do something about it. You can do something about it. We can certainly come together as a community to help the most fragile and vulnerable population in our society, children. These are children who live with fear, uncertainty, shame, and inconsistency every single day of their lives. We can certainly help them as they struggle against the huge obstacles just to get to school, to stay in school, to study and to learn, which is their number-one job as a child, to study and to learn. Agnes Stevens founded School on Wheels to knock those barriers down. She knew, as all of us know, that education is the only sure pathway out of homelessness and poverty. She knew that all children, including homeless children, need an education to survive, to be successful. In honoring and recognizing Agnes Stevens today, you honor and recognize our homeless students. So, on behalf of Agnes, all of our homeless students, School on Wheels, all of my colleagues, my team members, and my board behind me, I know Agnes would care about today. I know she would have been proud of today. Thank you so much.
Good morning, and thank you. I also is very honored to be in the presence of the Tuskegee Airmen, and being part of today is a memorable occasion. What I'd like to recognize, or have the council people recognize, are the heroes that don't put their lives at stake, but travel hundreds of miles on a daily basis to go meet with homeless kids that are spread out in an area of twenty-five hundred square miles throughout the area that we cover. The majority of them are in L.A. and L.A. County, and our facility is located on Skid Row, where a lot of the people behind me show up every day and help tutor over three hundred kids during the year. These kids are in this position at no fault of their own, and unfortunately, being homelessness for these kids is really their greatest risk. School on Wheels makes a positive impact to thousands of kids every year, and I just am delighted to be part of an organization that is truly grounded and understands the true problems that our society has today. I feel that education is the backbone of any society, and maintaining that with our youth is the most important thing that we can do. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and we all know that getting a good education is a ticket out of poverty, and the work that School on Wheels is doing is providing our homeless children in the City of L.A. that ticket by the support, love, and care. So, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, we first want to present a resolution to Agnes Stevens in tribute of her remarkable work, the great human being she was, and also for founding such a great organization. Thank you so much. Present, we'd love to present the second resolution to the president of the board, Josh Fein. Fein, I said it, Fein. The way I said it was Fein. 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 And thank the organization for the wonderful work they do in continuing the legacy of Agnes. Congratulations, and thank you so much.
Mr. Clerk, let's go to item twenty.
Madam President, item twenty called Special for Cards.
Mr. Walsh, item twenty.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or J. Walsh Confidential, tweeting at Hollywood Damns. Here we are at Rent Escrow Account Program. People have been blogging, emailing me how much money we've saved them, because remember, any code violations in your house, you report it to the manager. The manager and the owner don't repair them within thirty days, you report them to the city, and if they continue not reporting them, what happens? Their rent doesn't go to, your rent doesn't go to your landlord anymore. It goes to the city till he repairs the code violations. This, again, when you do a good, no, no, when you do a good job, I'm the first to congratulate you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Juan Alcala, item twenty. Mr. Alcala, you have two minutes.
What? Can I hold one minute?
No, you have a minute and forty-nine seconds now.
But I'm saying, I only want to speak one minute.
Oh, that's fine.
And hold my other minute. How do I do that?
Go ahead, sir.
I haven't figured out how to hold my other minute. Can you tell me how to hold my other minute?
Mr. Alcala, please state on the subject, item, you asked to speak on item twenty?
Yeah, the Rent Escrow, well, you guys, you predispose everything anyway. You decide who's in violation because there's a little piece of dog shed on the floor or something. You make up some idea, and then you go and penalize people all over. All you do is take money from the citizens right and left, through parking meters, through citations, through invented violations. All you do is bother the people when you could get the money from the federal government. You don't need to bother the people. We live in a fictitious society where the presses print money twenty-four hours a day. We got billions of dollars coming out of our ears.
Madam President, he is not talking about the reap.
Spread the money around. That's the problem.
Thank you, Mr. Alcala. There are no more speakers on this item. Mr. Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Item passes. Mr. Sadio for a presentation. Mr. Sadio, for your presentation, are you ready? Members, if I can ask you, if you can have your honorees stand behind you. During Mr. Sadio's presentation, we're asking for all the honorees to stand behind your respective council members.
Yes.
Oh, yes, you're standing here with us. We're going to present you.
Everybody has their peeps? Everybody has their peeps?
Mr. Sadio, when you're ready.
I'm waiting for.
Members, if I can have your attention, Mr. Sadio has a presentation.
Okay, great. Madam President, thank you. What an incredible morning it's been for us to be here with the incredible legacy, the living legacy of Tuskegee Airmen. It's also been an incredible morning for our Supreme Court, as it's fulfilled its moral obligation and continued to move its moral arc forward by acknowledging gay marriage in this nation. Today, as Mr. Galpern said earlier at a press conference, we are raising the rainbow flag and bringing down the Confederate flag. I was excited to be here this morning with the Tuskegee Airmen, but I didn't realize that many of their members were immigrants. They were Haitian, they're from Trinidad, and they should also be acknowledged. You know, the Tuskegee Airmen led the fight against racism, and against fascism, and against Nazism, and it's appropriate that they were in part integrated by immigrants. And it was a time when the world came together to fight that type of hate. And so, this morning is a special morning. It's a historic morning, and so I'm very excited to be here to talk about the role of immigrants in our city and to talk about the celebration of Immigrant Heritage Month, because really, diversity and unity and our commitment to social justice will trump all those who wish to scorn our great legacy. This nation, the fact of the matter is, has been built on the backs of immigrants, and they've been an integral part since the first day that this nation began. And with all deference to Native Americans, this nation is frankly exclusively a nation of immigrants, and this city has the largest population of immigrants residing outside their country of origin. For so many countries, the largest ex-patriots of Filipinos, the largest ex-patriots of Vietnamese, the largest ex-patriots of Mexicans, of Guatemalans, of Salvadorans, this is a really, really extraordinary place to live. We have immigrants from Armenia, from Chinatown, from Thailand, from Korea, from the Philippines, just to name a few. Now, we're here to celebrate their presence, and we're going to do it in a different way this year. We want to embrace the culinary contributions that are here, and in the back, you know, all these countries are well represented. I want to take a moment to make sure that we're very clear that all immigrants are welcomed in the city. Donald Trump, you're not welcome, but the rest of the immigrants are. Let's be very clear. And can we play the video right now for a second?
Struck rock and stuck. Together we came, across the ocean and towards the unknown. By horse and wheel, westward we came, chasing the sunset. We came by steam, across rivers, over mountains and valleys, towards the promise of a new beginning. We conquered the skies, built planes, buses, and cars. When we had nothing else, we came on foot, ran, and walked, and crawled. We made history, in the wake of those who came before us, before the waves of all of those yet to come. We carried luggage, letters, and loved ones. Some of us carried nothing but our own potential. We came for love, for liberty, for life. Our reasons for coming were as unique and as numerous as the forces that brought us here. But once we arrived, all of us did the exact same thing. We helped build this country, and we were welcome.
Very proud to be in Angelino today. I thank all of you. I thank the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs for working with us, and also welcome Dotus. Let's begin the celebration of immigrants in the city and continue the fight against laws that have failed to catch up to our reality, that we are really a city and a nation of immigrants who want to live together, whose strength is our diversity and our commitment to democracy and to justice. Let me begin by introducing our first honoree, Albert Sanchez, from... Yeah, Chico's, I got that. Chico's Mexican Restaurant. Albert opened his first restaurant. Seeing that there was a large Latino presence in Highland Park, he decided to open Chico's Restaurant in nineteen ninety-three. He thought that the Latino population would sustain him, but in fact, ninety percent of his clientele is Anglo. With that, let me introduce Albert Sanchez. Next, Mr. Kukorin could not make it today to be with us, but he wanted us.
Go, Mr. Kukorin's right here.
Mr. Kukorin has made it. I tell you, what a great city and nation it is. Immigrants, they just, you know, every day astound us. He was not expected to be with us, but the esteemed colleague, Mr. Kukorin, can speak well for himself.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sadio. I concluded my other meeting. I appreciate your generosity in being willing to fill in for me, but it's really a pleasure and an honor to be able to recognize Gangadeen, one of the finest Indian restaurants in all of Los Angeles, and, gentlemen, if I could ask you to come and join me here at my desk. This restaurant is really an exemplary, a terrific example of the contributions that you've talked about, Mr. Sadio, the contributions that the rich diversity of our immigrant community provide to all of us. Gangadeen Indian Cuisine, it's a family-owned and operated business that has enriched Studio City for nearly thirty years. Manmeet Singh Sani and his son Deepak are here with us today. They, as I say, have one of the finest Indian restaurants in all of Los Angeles and are so actively involved in our community. They serve up dishes at the Studio City Farmer's Market every Sunday, right outside of their restaurant, and they participate in support of so many of the organizations that are important in Council District Two, and I want to express my deep appreciation to them for both of those things. It's so important, their restaurant is so important, Mr. Sadio, that I once got a call from Washington, and it was from a congressman that we all know and love, Congressman Tony Cardenas, who told me that, you know, Gangadeen is having some issues with their parking, and it's my favorite restaurant, and is there anything you could do to help them? And of course, we were happy to do that. But even as far away as Washington, D.C., they're known for their cuisine and for their community activism, and it's a great honor for me to be able to recognize them as our honoree this year. Thank you very much.
So, look, I know, colleagues, that all of you are in a hurry and have other places to go. Mr. Englander, you asked me for some dispensation first earlier today, so please go forward.
I appreciate that, and you'll hear why, Mr. Sadio. Thank you very much, councilman, for honoring all of these true heroes and leaders in our community. I have Jason Larian with me today, and he is, he's not my honoree, but his dad is, and it's my honor to recognize Isaac Larian, the CEO of MGA Entertainment, as a CD-12 honoree for the Immigrant Heritage Month. Born to a Jewish family in Iran, Isaac left Iran in nineteen seventy-one with a one-way ticket, his entire family fortune of seven hundred and fifty dollars in his pocket. His first job was washing dishes at night in a coffee shop in Lawndale for a dollar sixty-five an hour. He attended California State University, Los Angeles during the day, where he obtained a civil engineering degree, and then in the early nineteen eighties, he started his own company selling brass giftware out of his car. of his car. In 1987, he went on to the toy business, becoming a distributor for Nintendo games and eventually a licensee for Power Rangers. In 2000, he expanded the company to include the creation and the development and marketing of the enormously successful Bratz dolls. Today, MGA Entertainment includes brands like Little Tykes, Movie Girls, and Bratz, and it's the third-largest toy company worldwide, the largest privately-held toy company in the world. Isaac was twice-named Ernst &amp; Young Entrepreneur of the Year, and his motto, "Fortune Favors the Bold," is displayed throughout MGA's building, right next door to my Chatsworth Community Service Center, and it's certainly true in his case. Isaac is not only a neighbor and a friend, but a dedicated family man and a true representative of the American dream. Isaac could not be here today, but on his behalf, I'd like to present the award to his son, Jason. Ladies and gentlemen, Larian. We've got a lot to go through. It was really pretty cool, where they are planning one of the most amazing projects in my district that we're going to have in the city of Los Angeles. MGA is building an entertainment hub of toy creation, and it's going to be a Google-esque type campus, where it's a live-work-play, seven, how many housing units?
Seven hundred.
Seven hundred housing units for all its employees, with barber shops and outdoor theaters and cafes and open to the community. We had a presentation with the mayor, and every general manager came in to hear this presentation, because we've never done anything like this in the city of Los Angeles. Isaac, if you can imagine this, this is his dream. This is a guy who came here with nothing and washed dishes for $1.65 an hour. His dream and his, this is the spot to shine, where he's got to present to the mayor of Los Angeles and every general manager to accept his project. And he said, "I'm not going to do that. I'm turning it over to my son, Jason, to walk you through the entire presentation of what we're about to create." And Jason spent an hour walking all of us through it, and we were all in awe. The apple doesn't fall far from the tree. Thanks, Jason.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Bonin, you have a pending appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Thank you for taking me out of order. Need to celebrate the Supreme Court's historic decision today, and thank you for acknowledging that. Thank you for doing this presentation today. Thank you for making this an annual event here in the city of Los Angeles. As you said, this is a city that is built by and is today made of immigrants. It is the foundation and the lifeblood of this city. I'm proud to be the great-grandchild of immigrants, and I'm glad that you decided to celebrate cuisine today as a way to understand the immigrant experience. I get to understand my Italian heritage from the incredible recipes that my grandfather used to make. I learned absolutely nothing about my Irish heritage from anything, because Irish cuisine just really doesn't cut it. But I'm very happy to be celebrating an immigrant business in my district today, one that specializes in Oaxacan food. I have, as some of you know, a very large Oaxacan community in the West Side, and some of the best Oaxacan restaurants in Los Angeles are on the West Side. And I'm proud today to honor one of those, the restaurant just a short distance from my West LA office, Monte Albán, a Oaxacan restaurant, and its owner, Afilia Martinez. Step up with Afilia. Her story, Afilia's story, really captures the American dream and the immigrant story and the small business story in Los Angeles. She immigrated to the United States from Oaxaca in 1989, and she started working in a fast-food restaurant. Her career as a restaurateur started because she made lunches for her husband that he brought to work. And they smelled so delicious and they tasted so good that all of her cowork, her husband's coworkers began to ask where the food came from. So all of a sudden, she began cooking for all of her husband's coworkers. That soon turned to a catering truck business and then to her own restaurant, which, as I said, is one of the most noted and exceptional Oaxacan restaurants in the city of Los Angeles, covered and reviewed positively and effusively by the LA Weekly, the Food Network, and the LA Times. They specialize in mole negro. It is Afilia's favorite dish herself. Twenty-nine different spices, she said, and serve all the traditional Oaxacan fare, all the mole dishes, clayudas, and is just one of the best restaurants in my district. Monte Albán and Afilia really capture the true essence and the spirit of Immigrant Heritage Month. I want to thank her for doing business in the city of Los Angeles. I want to thank her for being such a great business and such a great restaurant, and I want to thank her for being here today along with her children, Christopher, who's got the camera, and her daughters Daisy and Jenny, and her other son, Jonathan. Thank you all for being here today. And this is for you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Christopher, you can come up. You can come up, Christopher.
I hope they brought some mole. I'd like to, Madam President, take the privilege of introducing the honorees from our district. I want to begin by, all of you have enjoyed various times some of our events that our office is always able to share with you, some pastries or some cake or some different snacks that come nicely wrapped. They come from Ron Balaceros, who is the CEO of LA Baking Company. And in 1978, in the course of a tumult, a revolution in Nicaragua, Ron was forced to leave his country and came to the U.S. under political asylum granted by President Carter. Once in LA, Ron attended Evans High School, right here on the corner of Sunset and Figueroa, the great Evans High School. LA Trade Tech, LA CC, and became a member of Local 11, where he did his culinary training, ultimately becoming a pastry chef. He took those skills and worked his way up to production manager for Il Frenell Bakery, and 25 years later, he runs his own company, the LA Baking Company, in Lincoln Heights with contracts at all the finest restaurants in the city. With that, let me introduce our best friend, Ron Balaceros. Ron.
How you doing?
El Benado was founded in 1993 by Sonia Portillo, who immigrated to the United States from Guatemala in 1981. With the help of a business partner, Mrs. Portillo established the restaurant on the corner of Alvarado and Olympic, and has remained there ever since. Her restaurant and bakery serves as a family tradition, employing several family members, including her sisters and four children. Let me welcome Sonia Portillo. Both Lupe and Judy individually immigrated to the United States from China to chase the American dream. Along the way, they made a pit stop in Tijuana, Mexico, where they picked up some Spanish before continuing their journey to California. Hopu defines Lupe and Judy's American dream. All the people, customers, and friends that come through the restaurant help keep their dream a reality.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Immigrant Heritage Month, you know, we're all either immigrants or descendants from immigrants, so it's a really important moment to honor those who came before us and those who are here now, improving the quality of life and the vibrancy in all of our neighborhoods. And that is certainly the characteristic of the great 13th district that I am so privileged and honored to represent. From Thai Town, through Little Armenia, to Koreatown, and all of the neighborhoods in between, we have some of the most diverse neighborhoods in the entire United States, if not the city of Los Angeles. And one thing that I think unites all of us culturally is the love of food and cuisine. Man, do all differences get put aside when you're talking about food and enjoying great food together. And it is that spirit that I am honoring today, Panos Pastry, at the corner of Hollywood and Winona. They've been in operation for 34 years, represented here today by owners Jovina Zetlian and Norik Shabazian. Please give them a round of applause. Now, when I moved here in 1982, I did not know what a baklava was. The best ones in town, the best ones in town can be found at Panos Pastry in Hollywood. They were so successful that 10 years later, they opened another Panos in Glendale, is that right? In Glendale. And so, very impressive. They are such an integral part of the community of Hollywood, and I'm so proud, and you have to hear a little bit about their story. And let's talk about this. Panos Zetlian, a native of Beirut, Lebanon, who arrived in LA in the early 1980s, and, as I mentioned, opened another shop in Glendale 10 years later. Panos Pastry is one of the most popular baklava and bakery chains in Southern California, a family-owned institution among people of Armenian, Persian, and Middle Eastern descent. Called the king of the baklava, by the Los Angeles Times, Panos Pastry makes and sells Armenian, Middle Eastern, and European baklava pastries and famous Jovina's chocolates. And if you haven't had Jovina's chocolates, you must. Panos Pastry's commitment to quality products and customer satisfaction is best expressed in these words by Panos Zetlian. If my baklavas are not good enough for my children to eat, then they're not good for my customers to eat. And that is the principle that they live by, and everything in that store is just amazing. I am so honored to have Jovina and Norik as my honorees for Immigrant Heritage Month, and I'd like to present this certificate of appreciation to them, and thank you so much for 34 years of Panos Pastry in Hollywood, and God bless.
Thank you.
President Wesson?
I just kicked Mr. O'Farrell's honoree's purse, so I want to apologize on television for kicking it. Anyway, I want to thank Mr. Sadio. This is an excellent idea. I'm excited about it, and obviously, the other members seated around this horseshoe are excited as well. Well, today, I have before you Leonardo Mangana, from, born in El Salvador, came to this country 28 years ago, and I think, no, came here in 1980, right? Been in the restaurant business for over 28 years, started his first restaurant in 1987, and if you want to have some of the best papousas, please come to my district on Pico and Irola. Okay? Because he makes a mean papousa. He not only runs a very successful restaurant business, he also finds time to volunteer with the community. He is the vice chairman of the LAPD Olympic Division Community Police Advisory Board, and he is the president of the Byzantine Latino Quarter Bit. And a lot of his best work comes on the weekend, when he joins in with the community, is always engaged in community cleanups, whatever you need him to do, he never refuses. He's just that type of a good man. And it is my honor to present to you a man that's known to his close friends as Don Leo, as our leader from the Pico corridor from El Salvador, Leonardo Mangana. Could we please give him a big round of applause? Just for being a perfect example of coming to this country, being successful, and recognizing the importance of giving back. Thank you, and thank you for all that you do, and I've got something. Where are you? Obviously, after, somebody just presented him with my award, and let's just take a photo. Thank you, Mr. Sadio.
Thank you. Mr. Laban, you have a presentation.
Before I make the presentation, I want a big shout-out to the pride of Roosevelt High, all Eastern League, all American, all greatness in immigrant affairs. Gil Sadio, give Gil a big hand. Next to me is Vahid Sapir. Vahid Sapir I met because he runs a very, very, very big company that welcomes a stranger, welcomes a visitor. Starline Tours. In 1965, Vahid Sapir was parking cars, going to USC, let's hear for the Trojans, going to USC, parking cars, and Bill Hertz, who was Sid Grauman's PR guy, walks across the parking lot, right there at Orange and Hollywood Boulevard, and said, "Hey, Vahid, Slim, Slim's retiring. You should buy that old Lincoln of his and start the tour business that he has." Slim was a big, tall Texan and take people around all over LA and Hollywood, and Vahid scratched his head, and he said, "I'm going to give it a shot." And from that day in 1965, he has the largest tour operation in the state of California, not the United States, and he employs thousands of people who are ambassadors around, sharing the beauty of Los Angeles as well as Hollywood. In addition to his work, he's very good in all communities, and he's a special friend of mine. Let's hear it for Vahid Sapir, Starline Tours, Hollywood, California. Thank you very much, man. I love you. Thank you. Got it. Okay. And I want to just put a shout-out to Evans Adult School, one of the biggest joys I had in this job. I just got to say, this Evans Adults Community School at Sunset and Figueroa, and the energy that's there, and the teaching it does, I'm just very proud of that school and all schools. And I hope one day that we have an office of not just immigrant affairs, but citizenship, so we can welcome all immigrants, like my great-grandfather, who came from Germany and lived at 310 North Main Street. And then my other grandfather, who came from Ireland, lived on Central Street in the First District. And he was a police officer, and he made sergeant, he moved over to Wilshire District. That's how good the sergeant's pay was back then. God love you, Gil. God love our parents, grandparents, and God love immigrants and the United States of America.
I love Tom Laban.
Councilmember Kuritz.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio, and as the son of immigrants myself, I appreciate your recognizing immigrants in the city of Los Angeles. Today, I'm proud to honor David Heckmat, a hard-working contributor to the Westwood community for many years, and an outstanding local leader and immigrant business owner. David was born in Tehran in 1967. He came to New York at NYU to study management and marketing and international business and received a bachelor's and master's degree in those fields. After a couple of years of working in marketing in the U.S., he returned to Iran to start his own advertising and marketing company in Tehran. His business grew to be one of the most prominent agencies, handling the accounts of Pepsi, Kellogg, Polaroid, Hyatt Hotels, as well as many other leading international and domestic companies. Within a few years, he founded an import company and was the exclusive agent and distributor for Procter and Gamble, and introduced Pampers, Crest, toothpaste, Pringles, and many other brands to Iran. Unfortunately, violence swept through Tehran with the beginning of the Iranian revolution that we all remember, and David and many others had to leave. that we all remember, and David and many others had to leave and embarked for the US, and a substantial amount of the Persian community wound up in Westwood with David. Despite any fears of operating a business in an unknown land, David purchased Marion Robb's Westwood Cafe in 1979, and he transformed what was then a money-losing operation into a very successful restaurant that is there to this day doing well. And the California Restaurant Association recognized his accomplishments by nominating him for Restaurant Tour of the Year in 1988. His restaurant has been an important part of the community for 36 years, regularly serving not only members of the community, but celebrities and politicians and businesspeople. Thank you.
You have a good pass for the motion.
And in 1992, he established Westwood Corporate Foods, a contract food supplier for in-house executive dining of major corporations, which he's successfully done for many years. He's highly involved in the community in the 5th Council District, where he's served on HOA associations, has been on the board of the California Restaurant Association. He's a current member of the Westwood Community Council as a member of their executive committee. He founded a chapter of the City of Hope and has raised money for that for many, many years. And he received awards like the Outstanding Service Award from the West LA Chamber of Commerce in recognition of his many contributions to the community. So it's my honor to recognize David Heckmat, a great community leader and businessman in Westwood.
Councilmember Price.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio, for your singular leadership on this issue. This is really an exciting day for us to celebrate that which really makes Los Angeles so unique and so strong and so vibrant. And what better way to do this than by recognizing one of the greatest perks that we have in our city, and that's good food. So it's a great deal of pleasure today that I recognize an industrious, longtime, small business owner in the new ninth, Mr. Jaime Carvajal and his wife, Alejandra, and son, the founders of El Diablo Restaurants. You would have known that just by driving by the Alameda Swap Meet in our district, tucked away inside that marketplace is a lively, open-air restaurant selling everything from papousas to tacos to seafood cocktails to everyone's favorite churros. The restaurant is more than a place to get food, it's where family and friends meet. Family comes together to listen to music and to enjoy each other's company. Born in Jalisco, Jaime came to this country just 12, when he was 12 years old. Life for the Carvajal family was hard times. Jaime had to leave school to support his family. He did so while selling tacos on the street, but it wasn't long before the taco cart became a stand inside the Alameda Swap Meet, which is now the largest single stand in that marketplace and a place of exciting culinary delights. In fact, we were there yesterday, the staff was there for a real treat. Today, Jaime and his family own six restaurants throughout Los Angeles and one more in Monrovia. Of course, he didn't do it alone, his lovely wife, Alejandra, here with us, and their six kids have helped Jaime succeed, but it's, but he's the perfect embodiment of immigrants who come to our city. They are tenacious, they are industrious, strong work ethic, and as we say, ganas too. So we just want to congratulate Jaime El Diablo on their tremendous success as we celebrate Immigrant Heritage Month here in the city of Los Angeles. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio, and thank you for the format for this event today. I think it's very, very important. We often hear that Los Angeles is a tapestry, it's built on the strength of the people that inhabit the city, the immigrant experience, and, and the single, I think, thread that is the one that helps us bridge all those gaps is food, our ability to be able to sit in communion with one another, our ability to share our experience and break bread, I think, is the absolute most important way for us to bring the city together. And as you can tell, many spools of thread have been consumed by myself. I am honored here to bring to you today one of so many fantastic restaurants in my district. Socil Olivares is the co-owner of Birria Rosa Maria. And for those of you who understand birria, it is a very, very special dish. It's one that can be, my mouth is watering as I'm saying this, is one that can be made out of goat, out of lamb, out of beef, and I challenge any of you to find any birria in Los Angeles any better. Any better. Challenge taken, I suspect. The Hunger Games of council districts in Los Angeles. I challenge you to find any birria any better than the Birria Rosa Maria. Her parents, Mr. Buscaino, came to this country. Her father eventually would graduate from San Fernando High School, Ms. Martinez, and they immigrated to this country from Patingán, Michoacan, and from Samora, Michoacan, two very small towns in Michoacan, but bigger than my hometown of my family, Miquiroga, Michoacan. Over the years, they did what many families do, they pursued their dreams, they moved around a little bit, but their heart was always in the San Fernando Valley. And her father's dream, as well as her mother's, I'm certain, was to make sure that the children would take over their family business one day. And in 1984, they did that. The business transitioned to one where dozens of family members and friends were employees. Secundino and Martina are honored by not just their success as business owners, but as their brilliant children who have succeeded them and have taken over this incredible business. A few years ago, Socil and her sisters Cassandra and Erica took the restaurant and have shaped it into what it is, and they are talking about expansion now. So as we were sitting here enjoying the conversation, we're already beginning to plot on how it is that we make them even more successful. It is a fixture in Pacoima, like so many of the restaurants in my community are, and I'm so proud of their success and their commitment to our community and for their participation in making just the most amazing birria in Los Angeles, but also in making Los Angeles a real place to want-to-be, live, and eat. Thank you very much, Socil.
I think, though, there's another plate of birria a little further down. Mr. Bloomingfield, on the question of the Best of Southern California.
Yes. It's on? It's on, no. I wanted to rise, I'm honoring Chef Baha Hakim, who was born in Lebanon. He unfortunately is feeling a little under the weather today, so he's not able to join me, he may very well be watching us, because I know he's excited about this, so I wanted to say a few words. And first, really, to thank you for, for bringing this Heritage Month to us. We are a nation of immigrants, we are a city of immigrants, we're all immigrants. I'm, I'm both the grandson, the great-grandson, and the great-great-grandson of immigrants. And the chef, who, Baha Hakim was born in Lebanon, and he attended a culinary school there, and then he came to Los Angeles and attended a culinary school at Mission College and their culinary school. And he was able to parlay that into a series of restaurants, many of which you, you all may have heard of, Carnaval in Los Angeles, The Best of Mediterranean in Beverly Hills, the Bel Air Hotel, and then in my district, most recently, the Pita Cafe in Tarzana, which is a wonderful establishment. And so I wanted to make sure that we recognize him, even though he's not here, and to thank you for doing, I mean, bringing food as the, as, is a great way to talk about immigrants, because it's, food is the great unifier. We all love to eat, and it's a great way to explore other cultures, and it's always been that way. We all appreciate good food, no matter what your heritage is. So I really think it's, it's a, it's a special way to do this. Thank you for the ceremony, and congratulations, Chef Hakim.
Get well soon. Mr. Buscaino, down the San Pedro freeway.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sadio, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to highlight our wonderful immigrant community in the city of Los Angeles. I, too, am proud to be a son of Italian immigrants here in the city of Los Angeles, and with Mr. Fuentes, I, I think this, this BDF Food Challenge is on in the city of LA. We're going to have some fun with it, right, Mr. Fuentes? I think everyone's going to bring their A-game to the BDF Challenge. But geez, who needs a Food Network channel when we have City Hall here?
That's right.
Here, representing our culinary community, representing countries from all over the world. For me, I'm here to recognize Santa Luna Restaurant in our beloved community of Wilmington, on Avalon Boulevard, just a few blocks away from our Wilmington waterfront. Once you park your car, exit your vehicle, you'll get an aromatic whiff of the healthy and delicious ingredients that make up their exquisite menu. When you walk through the doors, you're greeted by Teresa, the host, whose excitement about having you there reaffirms your choice of venue. And through the kitchen service window, you can see Antonio, the chef, accompanied by Juan Carlos, the assisting chef, whipping up some great appetizing recipes formulated by these two great minds. The decor is courtesy of Antonio and Estefania, who's here joining us, a father and daughter who once had a dream of opening their restaurant that local industry folks would frequent because his food selection was healthy and made from the heart. And their story began at the end of 2011, where design, location, and a name was envisioned. Their goal was to host an array of, an array of clientele and a welcoming, warm, and colorful ambiance that confirms just how beautiful and special the Mexican culture is. The largest wall in the establishment reflects over two dozen crosses of different sizes, designs, and colors, reminding us why they are there today. Their belief in God and family and community is what has made Santa Luna a successful restaurant in just three years of opening its doors. I personally love going to Santa Luna, because most recently, I was introduced to birria, as Mr. Fuentes so eloquently described, the, the plate, it's a spicy stew made of goat meat, traditionally served at celebratory occasions such as weddings and baptisms. Every bite was better than the last. I absolutely loved it. And also, they have a phenomenal watermelon and mango water. Or Antonio reminded me, it's mango, it's mango water. Mango agua.
Aguas.
Aguas. Good. So today, I'm joined by Estefania, who is the youngest on the team, and she has envisioned Santa Luna, daughter of Antonio. Thank you, Estefania, for sharing your love and community culture and food with the city of Los Angeles, so we invite you all to come to Santa Luna in Wilmington and have a taste of birria down at Santa Luna. Thank you and congratulations.
And finally, from the CD14 Boyle Heights and surrounding communities, the Honorable Jose Wison.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. And Mr. Fuentes and Mr. Buscaino are on to something. Mr. Corcoran just reminded me that a few years ago, we started the competition between mules, between Oaxaca and Puebla, and that's become one of the largest outdoor food festivals here in the city of LA, if not the country. So we'll have a largest birria competition soon. But you know, a few years ago, I was driving down Marengo Street in Boyle Heights and kept seeing this restaurant called 3030, Mexicanos 3030. But as many of you know, in Boyle Heights, a lot of options for great restaurants, great Mexican restaurants. But I pulled over one day and decided to go in, and lo and behold, the first great thing I saw was at the owners, and the decor in the restaurant was from my home state of Zacatecas, where I was born. So that was a good sign. There was images of Pancho Villa, of the capital of Zacatecas with its great colonial-style architecture. But then he got to taste the food, and oh my God, I felt like I was back at home in Zacatecas. It reminded me of my mom's cooking, of my grandmother's cooking, and some plates that are very unique to Zacatecas. And I was in love. I live just a few blocks away, and I keep returning to the restaurant. And so today, I wanted to, and I'm honored to honor Gerardo and Josefina Acosta, who are from the capital Zacatecas, of the state of Zacatecas, and their restaurant, Mexicanos 3030. The Acosta family is proudly from Zacatecas Zacatecas and has owned their business in Boyle Heights for 10 years. The restaurant's name, Mexicanos 3030, is a tribute to the Mexican Revolution. There was a great battle that happened in Zacatecas, the capital, where really, the changed, changed the events of the rest of the revolution with Pancho Villa took over Hill in the area. Pancho Villa was a hero and proudly carried a caliber 3030 rifle, and his troops were known as the 3030. When you visit the restaurant, you see Pancho Villa, along with other important historic photographs throughout the interior of the restaurant. And of course, history aside, Mexicanos 3030 is an exemplary and thriving family-owned business, mainly because of their excellent food and service. All their dishes are delicious and authentic, including their mole, estilo Zacatecas, birria, asada, a little Zacatecas style, enchiladas, estilo Zacatecas, enchiladas, waztecas, and their famous salsa verde 3030, which I have some right here. Now let me tell you, my wife loves salsa. Every restaurant we go, no matter if we're at an American, Chinese, Armenian, whatever the food style is, she asks for her chilies. And you know what? Oftentimes, it's the Mexicans in the back of the house, so she, they bring out some chilies one way or another. But she tasted this salsa, and she fell in love with it. And part of my, in these days, it's not honey, bring home the milk, it's honey, bring home my salsa from 3030 when I'm getting home. So this is a great salsa that we eat with a lot of dishes at home, and it's my pleasure and honor to recognize a great immigrant restaurant in Boyle Heights that is emblematic of many hard-working immigrants who come to this country, who work hard, do what they have to do, and make sure they provide for their families. Many of us come to this country because of the opportunities that exist here, and let's not forget that. We often talk about the freedom and liberty and the democracy, and that's what we defended around the world, but the opportunities here, the economic opportunities are unlike anywhere else in the world. Oftentimes, throughout the world, the class that you were born in, that's where you unfortunately pass away in, but here in this country, people come from throughout the world because of the economic opportunities. Let's celebrate in this country that, the opportunity, along with the cultural diversity that we have. On behalf of the city of Los Angeles, Josefina and Gerardo Acosta, Mexicanos 3030, their restaurant for Council District 14, immigrant restaurant for Council District 14, 2015. Thank you so much. Felicidades.
Mr. Sadio, to close.
I'd like to bring up and honor Catherine Lyons. She's with Welcome Us. We've been collaborating with her and her organization for the last year, and so we want to welcome her up for closing and final words on this great kickoff to Immigrant Heritage Month. Please.
Thank you so much, and thank you for all of your kind words. It is our honor to accept this council, or this proclamation today on behalf of National Immigrant Heritage Month. Thank you again to Councilmember Sadio for your leadership on this issue. We're here for the second year in a row, which is very exciting. We stand here with immigrants and childrens of, children of immigrants in Los Angeles, with members from community organizations, with, of course, the honored members of the city council and Mayor Garcetti's office, and we are proud to recognize our immigrant heritage, both past and present. With more than 200 partners nationwide, including the White House, Immigrant Heritage Month 2015 has been a huge success so far. Just a couple of quick highlights. President Obama dedicated a weekly address earlier this month and shared his own immigrant heritage story, which was very exciting. We have 94 now with today's proclamation from 37 states, and over 70 members of Congress have co-sponsored a House resolution declaring June as Immigrant Heritage Month. And actually, just today, Senator Feinstein introduced a similar resolution in the Senate, so we are in very good company. We, today, we are reflecting on the positive role that immigrants have had in shaping our economy, our technology, our communities, and even our delicious cuisines, as we've heard so much about today, and hopefully will be sampling later. The universal American ethos of entrepreneurship, inclusion, strength, and resilience unifies us all. By highlighting the intersections of each unique immigrant experience, Immigrant Heritage Month 2015 has dispelled myths and illuminated how each individual journey has been instrumental to the formation, foundation, and ongoing strength of the to the formation, foundation, and ongoing strength of the United States of America. We all have stories to share. We heard some today, and we'd encourage you to continue to share your story on welcome.us. Thank you so much, and happy Immigrant Heritage Month. Thank you for having us, and thank you for all of your support.
A big hand for Betsy, whose heritage comes from Scotland. She's our council photographer. Give her a big hand.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio.
Madam Chair, I'm prepared to close, but before that, I want to ask Angelica Salas to come up and close for us. She is the executive director of Chirlia, one of our leading organizations who fights for immigrant rights every single day of the year.
Thank you so much, and I really look forward to actually getting to taste a lot of the wonderful food that many of these wonderful immigrants have prepared for us. I just really want to say, take this opportunity to say thank you to the council. Thank you to the city of Los Angeles for really showing what it means to be a welcoming city to immigrants, what it means through support of policy that stands with immigrants, what it means to really honor immigrant heritage. And right now, I think it was a wonderful day that we had Immigrant Heritage Day, the same day that we are celebrating the Supreme Court decision of full inclusion of our LGBT families. Wonderful day when we had the Testigui Airmen, who were here with us earlier today, because it's about fighting for equality and inclusion and full recognition. And I really loved your point, Council Member Labonge, about Evan School, which is about fighting for citizenship and all the programs that allow immigrants to be fully integrated into our city and into our country. So thank you again. Thank you, Welcome Us, and certainly, thank you so very much to Council Member Gil Sadio, who's always been a tireless champion and a partner for our immigrant families. Thank you.
Madam President, thank you so much, and thank all who have joined us today.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Members, if we can send items 17 and 18 forthwith. Mr. Labonge, are you ready for your presentation?
Ten seconds. I just need to do this. Good morning. It's been a marathon. It has been this morning. Mr. City Attorney, and I want you to smile one more time. And as I do, I want to introduce quickly the marathon runners who've run in every marathon. Come on up here, team, since 1986, and it's been a marathon. They've got to run two marathons with today's meeting. Barbara Haynes, you'll see right now. And where's Lou right there? And Lou, Lou Bionis, Lou, get up here. Legacy Lou, get up here real quick. We're gonna take a picture outside. Where'd Lou go? Here we go, Lou. Say hello to everybody.
Hi, everybody. I'm Legacy Lou Bionis, and I represent 173 legacy runners that have run every L.A. marathon since 1986, 30 years in a row. And Tom, we're here to honor Tom as well. We know that he's leaving office, and we're very happy to have this opportunity to thank him. And he helped us tremendously a few years ago, getting the marathon back to its traditional date. And for that, we'll forever be grateful.
You got it. Well, maybe I could run with you one time, huh?
That would be nice. We have a little special thing here. We're gonna make him an honorary legacy runner.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Lou, team. We'll take some pictures. Thank you, Sherri. Sit right down here.
There's Denny.
I know, Denny. Good to see you. Sit here, because we're gonna have another presentation right here. I want you to hear. Because we had a marathon. These are great athletes, right here. Give them all a hand. Sit right down there. But I want to introduce you to one of the greatest athletes in the United States. Please welcome to the podium on this day, the Mike Haynes Day in Los Angeles, which is almost over. I'm sorry, Michael, with this long meeting, I should've got you out the door earlier. Mike Haynes, give him a big hand, our member of the National Football League Hall of Fame. His mother, Barbara, get here, Barbara, give me a big kiss. Oh, I love. And partner Evelyn, give Evelyn a big kiss right here. But let me tell you about Mike Haynes. Mike Haynes was born in Dennis, Texas. He came out to Los Angeles, and they lived in the Santa Monica Virgil area. His brother Reggie and sister Monica all lived on an avenue, a nice avenue right off Virgil. And he went over to Lexington Avenue Elementary School, which is called Lockwood. I got it. It was with an L, Jose, I made a mistake. Lockwood Elementary School, which you know right there in East Hollywood, Thomas R. King Middle School, where we met as classmates, and John Marshall High School. And where at John Marshall High School, he was a great athlete, both in track and field and in football. From our summer days, we both went over to Los Angeles City College to play football for the Cubs. We were in summer workouts. But Mike was invited to a All-Star game, Mr. Wesson. It was a Northern and Southern, Northern and Eastern League against Southern and Western League. It was in the Memorial Coliseum. And Vic Kousha, who you remember, the coach from Wilson, he had all the Wilson guys playing receiver. And Mike said to Coach Kousha, I could play defensive back better than the guy he got out there. It's the guy from Belmont, I think. But anyway, he got a shot, and at that shot in the Coliseum game, he shut down a big receiver from Fremont High School at manual arts, and Arizona State saw Mike Haynes. Arizona State recruited Michael. He went to Arizona State, a four-year starter, all-conference, all four years, All-American two years. In his junior year at Arizona State, he had 11 interceptions, the most in the nation. And they never threw to his side his senior year. He was the number five player picked in the 1976 draft by the New England Patriots, and he exceeded well with the Patriots for seven years. And then, interesting enough, he spent a lot of time just north of this building in the summer of 19, in the fall of 1983, where he went before the federal courts to allow basically free agency for professional football players, or the Curt Flood Rule. It was ruled in Michael's favor, and midway through the season, he joined the Los Angeles Raiders, where it had one of its greatest teams ever, where Mike played at right corner, Lester Hayes at left corner, McElroy was a safety, as well as Mike Davis from Locke High School, Rod Martin, a great linebacker who went to Hamilton, Los Angeles City College, USC, and played for the Raiders. Many, many great players, I can mention, but Michael was one of the greatest ones, cultivated in the victory over the Washington Redskins, where you had such a beautiful interception, beautiful interception. But what I enjoy about in this day, and Barbara, here, you had much joy being here today, which is so special, learning about all the people of the city. Your son is extremely special. I remember one time going down to Arizona, we had a track meet, a try meet, Oklahoma and Arizona State, I forget the third school. Mike had the big, long jump of 25'8", 25'8", Mr. Wesson. He could jump and do everything in such a skill. But better than that, in his post-football days, he's been involved very much. He's a cancer survivor, prostate cancer survivor, and he's the national spokesperson for Know Your Stats. And it's important that we all get checked for our health. Every citizen get checked for ourself. Every resident get checked for ourself for prostate cancer, because it can be defeated if it's detected early. But even though it's 12:15, and we're in the afternoon already, Mike, and half your day's over, I wanted before I'm out of here to salute someone who has been extremely special to me. When you have role models, and I've talked about John Ferraro and Tom Bradley, but you have role models that you grew up with. You had role models who you were very close to. We were extremely close, Mr. Wesson. I was the center, Mike was the quarterback, and it was not a shotgun formation. So we were real close, real close. And just followed our lives. I had the opportunity to follow Michael closely in his professional career, because for 22 years, I was an assistant cameraman with the NFL Films, and always seeing Michael and other great athletes play in the Coliseum and other stadiums in the West Coast. So on this day, Michael, I really want to do, she's got a wonderful mother who I truly cherish and love when I check in with her on Lexington, and all the work that you have done, and Mr. Garcetti, and all the members, including the All-Easter League Gil Sadio, left-handed quarterback, gave the signature, too, so we salute. Mike Haynes Day in the city of Los Angeles. Good job. We'll give it a second. We'll give it a second. You're gonna go ahead. Good job. Good job, Sherri. Good job, Nancy.
I'm gonna try and be brief. I know most folks have been here a long time, but I want to introduce my mom, Barbara, and her partner for 45 years, Evelyn. So today was an extremely exciting day for her. I want to be real quick that, you know, there's, my life has really been led on the basis of my mom, the way she raised me, but also, a lot of it was just being a kid that grew up here in Los Angeles, where my neighbors were Japanese, Jewish, Hungarian, German, all different, different places and different races. Tom wanted me to throw in Irish, obviously. But what was kind of made Los Angeles special was you guys have been talking about it all day-to-day, the food, the people. For me, it's five Fs. Food, film, friends, football, and philanthropy. So it's really made my life really exciting, and without philanthropy, really, and the volunteers that help around the city and really make, you know, things come together. I don't know if the city would be the same. And so I know I'm being honored, but I want to do my little part to say that I want, you know, you folks, if not for you, the city council, I don't know that I would have had the type of experiences I've had. And I want to give a gift. Now, I didn't really check it with Tom, but I know that you probably cannot accept any gifts more than $19.99. So, and so we have these pens at the Pro Football Hall of Fame. I just got back from a trip to Israel, which was sponsored by, well, I guess, the ambassador of Israel. He thought that actually, a football could help bring diversity, a little bit more diversity and understanding diversity of people working together, to Israel. He played football himself. He was a quarterback. He knows a lot about it. He's actually talking to the prime minister there in Israel, and the prime minister, when he was addressing our group, used football to talk, you know, in his analogies, you know, just several of them, talking about being on a great defense, being on the one-yard line. It was really a lot of fun. So I don't really want to talk about politics too much, but if you have not been to Israel, you need to go. It's fun. It's not as unsafe there as a lot of people think it is. The other gift I want to give is this blue bracelet. As a prostate cancer survivor and the national spokesperson for prostate cancer, my goal is really to make all people aware that this is a disease that caught early, is treatable, and you can beat it. Most people have no idea. Every man doesn't know what a prostate gland does, where a prostate gland is located, or any symptoms of prostate cancer. But we all know what breast is, what a breast does, where a breast is located. So I want to get the same kind of awareness for men in the prostate that we have for women. One in eight women will be diagnosed with breast cancer in their lifetime. One in seven men will be diagnosed with prostate cancer in their lifetime. So more men are gonna get prostate cancer than women are gonna get breast cancer, but it's kind of unknown in a lot of places. And as an African-American man, I'm more likely to get it than others, and if it runs in your family, you're even more likely. It's one in three if it runs in your family. So I want to, I can't actually speak anyplace without talking about the importance of awareness for prostate cancer. So I want to, I want to thank the council for this award, and I actually want to thank you for the great example that you've set for other cities, and I hope, like heck, we can bring football back to Los Angeles. So thank you for your time.
Very much. Mr. Sadio?
Mr. Sadio?
Mr. Sadio's on the cue to speak, to close. Mr. Sadio?
Tom Labonge, you've been a great public servant, and one thing that you always remind us is the tremendous richness of every citizen of the city of Los Angeles. I had the honor of playing on a football field in 1971, same time Mike Haynes was playing. Vince Frogamo, Warren Moon, we were all the quarterbacks of that era, Randy Garcia. And what we learned, some of us, some went on to go play football, others of us went on to do other things, but what we learned, Tom, and you know this, is that it's leadership that matters most. And Mr. Haynes, I want to thank you and appreciate you for your leadership, particularly in the area of cancer. My wife passed from breast cancer. My father, who was a survivor of prostate cancer. Your leadership's invaluable, and that's what we learned on the field of those days. We learned leadership. And then, most important, Tom, as the center to the quarterback, you know, we learned teamwork. And we learned how to work together and how to plow forward. So thank you so much, Tom, for your service and for making us appreciate every citizen of the great city of Los Angeles. And Mr. Haynes, thank you for your incredible leadership and for all the joy you brought to the city during your career, and for all the wellness you're bringing us in your post-career. Thank you so much. God bless you. Thank you. And Madam President, just one extra overtime minute. One evening, we're in here in 1992, there was an election. President Clinton was here in the room, and after he had talked, it was only 35 of us in the mayor's press room, I went up and approached the President of the United States and told him, Mike Haynes said hello, telling him we were just at the Marshall Lincoln Homecoming game, but he wanted to come down and say hello to you, but he went to go see his mom, and the President Clinton said, that's a better choice. And then President Clinton turned to his friend and described Michael's attributes as a football player at 6'2 1/2, 195, how he could turn and break for the ball, run faster backwards, and he goes forward. And this is the President of the United States. And that's so special, Michael, you and your skills, your family, all your family. Love you, Michael. Mike Haynes Day, city of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Haynes. Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Let's move on to item one.
Item one, called Special Cards.
Mr. John Walsh, item one.
And Madam President, once again, there's a recommendation from the department, after hearing cards on this matter, to receive and file it in as much as the property was determined to be an owner-occupied, single-family dwelling and thus exempt from lien processing.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential. Item one, these concern building and safety, again, a nuisance abatement. Some of these are warranted, some are unwarranted. When they're unwarranted, we encourage the owners to fight them, and we've had a great deal of success in eliminating these liens. If you've watched, no one comes back after getting up here and protesting a lien and it's postponed. They don't come back and say, that's a lot of BS, you're giving me the same lien. We have been able to fight homeowners' liens and property owners' liens successfully. And you can see that. But when they're warranted, you do a good job. Remember, when you do a good job, we say, thank you. When you do a bad job, we say, go to hell. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Arcala?
This is one item where I will tell Mr. Donald Trump to go straight to hell, because he owns so many properties, and there are so many people on the street, and the idiot goes and talks against Mexico.
He is not talking about this item.
Anyway, I'm talking about liens against the people and their properties. Our government is a homeless-making institution, and homelessness has become a very large industry where all these beneficial institutions benefit from homelessness. The homelessness do not get even a minute portion of the monies that are supposedly going to the homeless. But all these other institutions, they keep profiting out of looking so good, helping the homeless. The only way to end homelessness is to provide homes for every homeless person in the world. I'm talking about you taking away homes from people through the lien process and creating more homelessness. You are a damn homeless-making institution, and we need to reverse the trend. We need to have- We need to have every single human being in the world in a—under a roof. Quit talking about homelessness. In one of your speeches, some of your people mentioned the word homeless about twenty, thirty times, and it's time to stop talking about it and—and doing something about it. All right?
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon. This is the first time that I take the opportunity to discuss one of my project matters under one of these—item number one, especially when it comes to the non-compliance and code enforcement violations. As you all know, the—the alley that I'm doing the project for the past year and a half, it's been in violations, especially for code enforcement from the building and safety and street services regarding the sidewalks being dominated by the tables and the chairs. For over a year and a half, even under the compliance laws and the code enforcement laws and the code violations which applies to this particular alley, there hasn't been a single prosecution or a lien either to the properties or the property owners or the restaurants. Especially with the Willett's case, it is imperative that if, for example, code violations are supposed to be implemented and the building and safety rules must be complied with, why is it that this particular section of the—the code and the street is not being held to its values? There has been multiple complaints. There has been multiple processes in place, yet after a year and a half, no one—I've spoken to Mr. Koczek, I've spoken to Mr. Shepard, and yet we have to see a compliance. It shouldn't take two years to comply. Thank you very much.[737.73][737.73](applause)
Next speaker, Mr. Herman, item one.[743.56][743.56](applause)
I pass.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, we have an item one, A. CD six from Nury, a lien, a very expensive lien against a black man married to a white woman. It's a racist lien on 1-5041 West Bassett Street, named after a dog.[791.43][791.43](dog barking) And one thing we don't want to do is go against animals and people. There's a synergy—a synergy—
He is not talking about this lien.
—six. Stop fucking interrupting me. I'm on the topic. 1-5041 West Bassett—[814.73][814.73](dog barking) —Street, that's all. Please forgive the lien, Nury. The people came here last week. They asked for Nury. They said, "On item CD six, 1-5041, who's my councilwoman?" And I said, "She's a nice lady named Nury, but you weren't here." So, then I went to Corin Price, and I said, "Corin, you need to step in for Nury and help these people get this lien removed." So, today, they're not here. I don't know. They need your help, Nury. It's very expensive. And then number B, CD three, is Bob Bluman Stupid, 1-8159 West Kittredge. For $295, come on! The Jews have that in their back pocket for coffee change. Just pull out $295, Mr. Bluman Field, and give it to the Treasury to wipe out the lien so both people can be free before this Independence Day. Thank you, Nury.[889.00][889.00](applause)
Thank you, Mr. Spindler.
You know it. Yes, city attorney, put liens on properties for all the types of nuisances, especially toxic noise and gang infestations, drug dealers, wetbacks, criminal rings who come—who commit chronic home invasion robberies, theft, vandalism, and graffiti. Confiscate their homes for non-compliance and for they themselves having dilapidated homes filled with cucarachas and living in a cochinetos. Moreover, I have spoken to the code enforcement and building and safety personnel, and I promise not to use their names, and they say it's a cat-and-mouse game dealing with these Latinos. I know that to be true. So, stop rewarding these violators, the gangbangers and the wetbacks, prolonging the lien process. Fry their asses like chicharrones, please. And God bless Donald Trump. I really admire the man. God bless him. Thank you, Donald Trump, and God bless America.
She is not talking about the item now.
Oh, I am ecstatic! Anyway, clean up America. Let's restore America, please. Start again. Abide—enforce a rule of law, city attorney. You're paying—you're getting paid $300,000 a year. Come on, man.
She's not talking about the liens, Madam President.
Ms. Ramirez, I'm going to ask you, please stick to the—to the—to the item, please.
Again, they are committing—not—they are—
Thank you, ma'am.
There's a lot of code violations. You are not conducting your annual inspections. Why don't we move that up to at least three inspections per year? Not one, but at least three. Again, we're paying—we're playing the cat-and-mouse game, so let's beef up the inspections, three a year. And—and again, compliance, let's get these cucarachas out and start cleaning up the neighborhoods. Come on, look at Los Angeles. We are near the cesspool, Los Angeles River. I mean, pretty soon, this is going to be a pinche cochinero. Come on, clean up the city, city attorney. It's in your power to do so. Again, let's wipe up this mess. Look at the stench. Smell the stench. The urine is everywhere, from the cucarachas on the steps of City Hall steps to all over. Come on, clean up America. God bless Donald Trump.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. That concludes cards for item one. Mr. Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Item passes. Next item, item two.
Item two called Special for Cards.
John Walsh, item two.[1048.33][1048.33](applause)
Is this how it goes every day?[1054.00][1054.00](laughter)
The people are not allowed to speak freely.[1060.08][1060.08](music)
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, J. Walsh Confidential, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Stay tuned for a public comment. This is a hearing appeal concerning assessments for the maintenance of the sidewalks for Van Nuys and Victory Boulevards. In fact, nobody should be paying for these assessments unless they get something for it. They're not getting anything for it, those people who are paying it, those property owners. Of course, the streets are not maintained. The streets are falling apart. Victory and Van Nuys—I mean, people are stumbling now, getting million-dollar awards. We are in sidewalk chaos, and the problems go back to Mayor Sam Yordi. That's the last time the sidewalks were in any kind of shape. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Juan Arcala, item two. And, sir, you have one minute left.[1127.97][1127.97](pause)
I agree a hundred percent with Mr. Walsh. The sidewalks are falling apart. I've been riding a bicycle for, what, seven years, and I don't see any improvement on the sidewalks or the—or the streets. Oh, by the way, I'm not using profanity today because there's a little child behind you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Otherwise, I would have told you in the words that people know how to express themselves the best. What I really think about your city—
He is not talking about this item.
—is a piece of junk. All your sidewalks are a piece of junk.[1185.65][1185.65](pause)
Our next speaker is Wayne Spindler for item two.[1194.91][1194.91](pause)
Yes, we have again for Nury. The appeal in Van Nuys and Victory Boulevard. Please, Nury, forgive this, Nury. Take it away. Don't—don't do the sidewalk assessments because the overburdened businesses over in Van Nuys are so pobrecito. They're so poor. They can't afford it. Look out for the children when they walk down the street and see vacant storefronts. Once upon a time, there were businesses in there, but they went bankrupt because they had to pay too many taxes. But you have a chance today to reverse this trend. Sustain the appeals. No to the assessments. Free the business owners so they can buy more things for their stores like a pet chihuahua.
That concludes cards for item two. Mr. Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll.[1273.41][1273.41](pause) Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you. Item passes. Next item, item three.[1281.15][1281.15](pause)
Item—item three called Special for Cards.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Number three is a hearing appeals. Again, this is concerning the maintenance of the sidewalks. I don't have to repeat what I said. Everybody—I mean, even the people in front of the Braille Institute can see how poor their—or feel how poor their sidewalks are. This one has Ventura Boulevard. The Valley has some of the worst sidewalks in the city, Caster to Beverly Glen, and I hope this hearing appeals—you will assess the property owners zero. J. Walsh Confidential.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Next speaker, Wayne Spindler, item three.[1356.65][1356.65](pause)
Well, here we again, kids. But this is in CD five, and it's—CD five is operated by somebody called Peppa Pig, and they're very, very wealthy in CD five. So, these are mostly Jewish people with a lot of money on Ventura Boulevard. In this case, I think they can afford it, but the problem I have, speaking for especially little children, is that when mommy and daddy get home, they want to have money to buy toys and—and a pet chihuahua. So, these businesses should keep the money instead of giving it to the evil city that does bad, bad things to the economy. So, sustain the appeals and give the businesses amnesty from this. Thank you.
Next speaker, Mr. Herman, item three. After Mr. Herman, Antonia Ramirez, your last speaker on item three, ma'am.
Well, all you kids, Mr. Peppa Pig had to go eat. He didn't want to hear the story about the assessments for maintenance on Ventura Boulevard and Caster. Such a lovely white community where all the white people get all the best things, and those of us are disproportionately discriminated against by arbitrary, capriciously the white people. Again, hearing against the annual confirmation of assessment for the maintenance of the sidewalks for Ventura Boulevard, Caster Avenue to Beverly Glen, Sidewalk Maintenance District. Mr. Corretts, would you please, next time, sit in your seat when you push the button and say yes for the vote? Because we're against this, and now I'm turning back the floor to you, Ms. Speaker. Hello, little girl.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. Ms. Ramirez, item three.[1506.65][1506.65](pause)
Thank you very much. Conduct the hearing appeals against the annual confirmation of assessments for the maintenance of the sidewalks. Now, Ventura Boulevard was a beautiful, pristine—I mean, that was the crown jewel of the Valley, Ventura Boulevard. Sad to say, it's been—it's had a high turnover of businesses. They're just not making it, and the problem is that they're hiring too many wetbacks and gangbangers, and those same people are destroying the businesses and the sidewalks. Having said that, yes, conduct the hearing appeals and make sure that these businesses do maintain the sidewalks, even though it's their fault because they hire these wetbacks and gangbangers who commit the crimes and now mark the territory as their turf. So, again, sad to say, these wonderful people are giving the opportunities to these employees, and these employees backstab the owners and the city. So, I'm sorry that—honestly, Ventura Boulevard has gone down the hill. It is a shame, especially Caster and Beverly Glen area. How sad, because it really was beautiful. It is no longer. Again, the drilling on the—and hammering of the sidewalks, this poses a lot of great danger for a lot of elderly people. You used to see a lot of couples walking down the streets, not as much anymore. So, again, let's—let's start working with—with restoring the sidewalks and having people, again, walk these beautiful streets that one was the crown jewels of the San Fernando Valley. And Ventura Boulevard, I don't think it'll ever be that, which was thirty to forty years ago, like Chandler Boulevard. It was just beautiful. Again, you do need to maintain these sidewalks, business owners, and it's your fault for hiring these wetbacks and gangbangers. Payback is a bitch. It all comes back to bite. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. That concludes speakers for item three. Mr. Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Item passes. Next item, Mr. Clerk, item five.
That's item five called Special for Cards.
And, Mr. Walsh, I'm going to remind you, you have one minute left, sir.
Yeah, I can see. John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. I just want everyone to know that this is a slam dunk. You haven't—you once stopped one liquor license up here, but other than the speaker here or the chair, no one has ever stopped a liquor license. More and more liquor. And if there are any children here, I want them to know liquor is a poison, and it causes people to drive and kill children on the road and hit and run. And we have more places to buy beer and wine than any other city in America, and I want you to know that whoever votes for this—this liquor license at South Santa Fe will have the blood on their hands of the next hit-and-run driver in that neighborhood. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Next speaker, Wayne Spindler, item five.[1723.97][1723.97](pause)
Jose Wezar is at it again, more drinking and alcohol. Aw, little kids. Now, a large, big booze operation, Wine Stop LLC, is getting a liquor license, so when daddy comes back home from a hard day's work and he hammers a few down and slaps mommy around, it's because she was drinking. We could stop that by eliminating so many of these additional liquor outlets, which Nury would do, but the problem is, Mr. Kitty Cat Jose Wezar, he's a big kitty.
Mr. Spindler, you're not talking on the—on the item, sir. Get back to item five.
But there's a large kitty cat councilman that wants to get more alcohol out there, so say no.[1794.33][1794.33](meow)
Next speaker, Mr. Herman. Next speaker, Mr. Herman. After Mr. Herman, it's, you're next, Ms. Ramirez.
Wow, another liquor license, but I'm going into Nury mode.
Now, you children, at 1025 South Santa Fe Avenue, we're having a public convenience or necessity for more wine stops at the wine store. Well, why do we need more wine stops? Why, mommy? Mommy, why do we need more wine stops? So thank you, mommy. Mommy, please, we have to stop the wine selling and the beer for necessity. I can't indulge in this conversation because Batman was here the other day and he was very upset about all these alcohol permits and license and sales, but no one apparently cares. Another gentleman got killed in Highland Park on a head and run at 2:00 in the morning because he decided to ride his bike. But it could have been alcohol abuse, sickness, a disease that we've created because we issue out permit after permit. And Mr. CD14 Jose Wezar, who loves to see people die, but yet at 100 West First Street, at Senior Fish, Senior Fish, he's trying to get a liquor license. And watch when he gets his because Jose Wezar will give it to him. Why? Because Wezar loves to drink, like the bar he bought in Boyle Heights. We'll go in one day and celebrate Mr. Wezar's grand opening at the bar. And we'll all indulge in wine and alcohol off-site sale consumption. Isn't that great? Maybe that's why Matt Zale stepped down from Public Works because he got offended. He got offended because Eric Garcetti, the mayor, gave him a new job.
He is not talking about this item.
Dion, you're not the speaker.
Mr. Herman, Mr. Herman, get back to item five, sir.
Squash it, Dion. You look like the Monopoly man.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. Antonia Ramirez? Ma'am, you have one minute left.
Thank you. Yes, sell liquor. It's Wine Stop, Wine Stores, freedom to engage in fair and open flow of commerce. If the uncivilized, jealous, nosy, racist, hate-mongering wetbacks and chungo Latino gangbangers can't handle their liquor, stop. If they can't stop, arrest them and deport them. Law enforcement has always arrested and deported, arrested all military veterans and pilots. So now arrest and deport these chungo Latino gang-banging ugly pussies who only want to engage in criminal activities. Now, should every store owner who sells liquor have to ask every patron, do they drink or do they have a booze problem? I mean, it is not fair that this burden should be on the owner. They're there to make a profit. Let's be fair with them. Let's not abuse them or violate them too. They come here to enhance their lives. Why should we burden them with our troubles of not being able to handle the booze? If you can't handle the booze, stay the hell out. Give the owners the right to make a lawful way of existence. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. That concludes our cards, speaker cards for item five. Mr. Clerk, open the row. Close the row. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Item passes. Item 22.
Item 22 called Special for Cards.
Mr. Eric Previn, are you here? Eric Previn is not here. Next speaker, Mr. Herman. You have one minute left, sir. Item 22.
Why do we have these barriers here? Someone's going to get killed and the Olympics is coming around and I can't be...
Mr. Herman, item 22.
22 is about the Olympics. Look, Wesson and LeBange, Special Olympic World Games.
Look at Nury. We can invite all the kiddies from all the schools and all the cities with Dion's little boys and girls to jump around, jump around for the Special Olympics. Tom LeBange, look, we're having the Special Olympics located in the city of Los Angeles, subject to the approval of the mayor for June 30th, 2015. But we're only going to issue from the mayor's deposit $250,000 for unincorporated balance. But what about the rest of the money for the Olympics? Come on, let's jump around for the Olympics. Jump around, jump around, jump around, jump, 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 Dion. Off-subject, sorry, Dion, I just had fun.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. You're done. Next speaker, Ankur Patel. Item 22, sir.
So I'm on the Chatsworth host town for the Special Olympics. And I appreciate the attention of some of the council members as usual. I do value these two minutes and I try not to make a mockery of the time allocated here. But it's frustrating when you have hours and hours of presentations. You know, I come out from Chatsworth, two hours to get here to speak a little bit. So I'll try and stay on the topic, but please understand, I sympathize with these, the Pina Gallery sometimes, and sometimes that comes out.
So you need to speak to the...
On this specific item of $250,000 being allocated from the Parks and Rec Department from Chatsworth, our view is a lot of that money is going to go to transportation, right? The LA DOT, there's permits going on. My council member, Englander, is not here right now, so I hope some of you can parallel. We have in our staff, or on Englander's staff, Bree Breckenridge, a staff person, has been designated kind of the point person. And then somebody under there, John Cotto, who's actually putting in the applications for buses to move the delegates. We have, I guess, Serbia and another country bringing in about 150 delegates from LAX to bring them to CSUN where they're going to be staying in the dormitories with other delegates. And I'm not particularly interested in this, but I had time, I was here, I felt like I might as well speak about this. Transportation is an important issue. There's a lot of money involved. Councilmember Corretts, I mean, Correian, sorry, I apologize, but you remember that Salida Reynolds, the new general manager of the Department of Transportation, I came to that meeting a while ago. And there's an opportunity to look at any transportation spending in some flexible light, right? Obviously, we have special, or delegates who have some disabilities. We're going to be putting out buses, there's going to be hundreds. And in 13 seconds, maybe the big idea in transportation along the lines of Veolia and V Transit, the way that is contracts out, we can look at Uber or Lyft or some other ways of using technology to be more effective and spend our money in transportation and this time more effectively.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Wayne Spindler. Wayne Spindler, you have one minute left.
Yes, it's for the Special Olympics, for people like me that are disabled, some say mentally, but lately, they will not give me permanent disability. They tell me to come to City Hall and talk here as a form of therapy. So $250,000, I brought a small bag. Could you give me the $250,000? Just put it in the bag and I can leave and I could buy some bus passes. For example, I was at the Transportation MTA Board Meeting yesterday and I saw some familiar faces. Somebody looked like a goat, Paul Cracorian.
He is not talking about this item.
Again, I saw the goat.
You're done, Mr. Spindler. That concludes speakers for item 22. Mr. Clerk, open the row. Close the row. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Item passes. We're moving on to public comment. Mr. Walsh?
I think it was an insult to the Tuskegee Airmen. They were here, they wanted to speak, but Herb just went on and on and on and on. We wanted not to hear from you assholes and your asshole restaurant owners where you're getting, we wanted to hear from Tuskegee Airmen. And I want you to know, every black person up here, that all you heard was 4F Herb Wesson, who hadn't have the guts to fight for his country, talk about the Tuskegee Airmen. Like a white man likes to talk to blacks, Whitey Wesson talked about the Tuskegee Airmen. And I'm hearing now that the person on Matt Sabo is no longer, is this true? Pro-Tim, making $200,000 a year at the Public Works Commission, and that he's over at Eric's office? I don't know if it's true. If I hear nothing from you, I think it's true.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Next speaker, Eric Previn. I called him earlier, he wasn't here. Eric Previn is not here. Next speaker, Rusty Miller.
Good afternoon. Yeah, thank you. It's kind of hard to follow all that. Members of the council, I'd like to thank Mr. LeBange for all of his service to the community over the years. I admire all of you, the challenge that all of you face as council members, day in and day out. But on a personal note, given today's Supreme Court ruling, it was 10 years ago that one of my former colleagues on the Silver Lake Daybird Council, Jason Line, and I went to a, I think it was Arts and Culture Committee meeting, where there was a item to remove the city's position on marriage equality with the city's lobbyist in Sacramento. And we went and lobbied Tom and Eric, I mean Alex Padilla, to keep that position alive, which they did. And it came back to City Council to do that. And that was, you know, given today's ruling, I think that was really good.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. Thank you very much, sir, for being patient. Thank you very much. Next speaker, Mr. Herman.
This song is dedicated to you, Zable. I can't go any further than this. Goodbye, Zable. Goodbye to Public Works. I guess this is the end. Now I see you leaving to the mayor's office one more time. What the heck to do? What the heck to do? I say, Zable, goodbye, goodbye with Tom. Goodbye to all of you. I guess I am right. You're gone, you're gone. Goodbye to you. Goodbye to you. Now, by the way, at 311 Broadway, I want that access ramp removed and you need to put a ramp that's access for people with disability on Broadway.
Next speaker, Juan Akala.
I am speechless because I am being followed by a white cockroach that wants to eliminate all wetbacks. Wetbacks, you know, Mr., the guy with the wig, what's his name, the one that's running for president, you're a total asshole. And you were finally, you represent everything that is wrong with the world. Capitalistic pig attitude, bashing your neighbor to the south. The neighbor that you stole half the country from, you call him wetbacks, you call him illegals. There is no illegal human being in the world, you assholes, including you, white cockroach.
Next speaker, Mr. Wayne Spindler.
After talking about the person that maybe drinks a little too much there. We're finally going to get rid of Tom LeBange, finally off this council. Oh, so tired. Oh, I'm so tired. Parks, he's leaving too. He's too tired to come here anymore. It's so tiring to make $180,000 a year and it's too hard to come here to the meetings all the time. So, well, we are going to get two new councilmen next month. And one of them there from Parks's district already took his $100,000 bribe. But we have one shining moment. We might have a dissenting vote. David Woo.
Thank you. Next speaker, Sid Maxudian. Is he still here? Sid Maxudian? He is not here. Next speaker, Ankur Patel.
Thank you for not starting the time until I speak. I appreciate that. So I've been coming here for, you know, seven, since 2007, a long time, maybe council meetings, and things don't change, right? If it's a different set of hecklers or however you want to call it, I appreciate your attention. Mr. LeBange, how do you feel about CD4 and how gerrymandered it is? Isn't it a shame? I'm thinking the redistricting commission that's going to come up, you'd be a good person to be on there and maybe deal something with that. I don't know how many of you read Bernard Parks' article in the LA Weekly, right? It seems like mostly staffers, the majority of people in here are staffers. So that was pretty interesting to me. I appreciated it. There's always been different viewpoints among you city council members on different issues. And I'm going to miss Bernard Parks's position. I hope some of you will at least low-key support some of the things that he said. Again, you have so much, it feels responsibility and power. People line up for so much time just to speak for a minute here and I hope you take your job seriously.
Thank you. Next speaker, Antonia Ramirez.
Bravo to Donald Trump. Yes, these uncivilized, uncouth, unrefined, venomous, nosy, jealous, racist thieves and evil hate-mongering wetbacks and chungo Latino gangbangers' agenda is to destroy America. You've got my vote, Mr. Donald Trump. Now, let's restore America. Second positive known, mi elegante, classy, cultured, and magnificent masculine voice, mi honrado ex-presidente Vicente Fox de la República Mexicana, his birthday is July the 2nd. Next is another vivacious, tenacious leader with a brilliant supersonic black stealth brain who allowed freedom to speak uncensored without interruptions. The honorable ex-mayor of Anaheim, Kurt Pringle, has the Midas touch and he greatly prospered Anaheim in Quantum Leap. His birthday is tomorrow, June 27th. Happy birthday to these powerful leaders with contagious personalities and God bless America. God bless the United States military, all our chopper pilots, you whip them puppies, babies, and all our Gillespie Daredevil pilots extraordinaire. God bless America. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes public comment. Colleagues, Mr. Clerk was before us.
Madam President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
Members, any announcements? Mr. LeBange, do you have an announcement?
Wish everybody a great weekend. We're going to have a great weekend throughout Southern California. Visit your local parks and libraries and enjoy and love Los Angeles.
Thank you. Any other announcements, members? Mr. Wezar?
Madam President, this weekend at Boyle Heights, at Hollenbeck Park, we have our annual fireworks show. At El Sereno, the El Sereno Park, we have our annual fireworks show as well on Saturday. And on Sunday is the Eager Rock Fireworks Show at Eager Rock Park. We invite everyone in those regions if they want to enjoy some fireworks. And to remind everyone that fireworks are illegal in this city. And please enjoy the public displays either this weekend or on 4th of July. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wezar. Any other announcements? Any adjournments? Mr. LeBange, Mr. Cracorian, Mr. LeBange?
Members, one of the greatest of all...
Everybody, please rise for council adjournments. Thank you. Go ahead.
Danny Villanueva, one of the greatest of all, passed just recently. He was 77 years old. He was a fixture here in Southern California. He was born in New Mexico and one of nine of 12 children. But when he came so famous, he's a pro football player for the then Los Angeles Rams, where he was their key kicker. And he was the first Spanish-language broadcaster, which was the growth here out of KMEX here in Los Angeles. He was an eight-year veteran of the NFL, but always involved in the community and all the programs, growing up as a young man in this city.
the programs, growing up as a young man in this city. There was Danny Villanueva often at Parks, teaching everybody about football and sports. He survived by his wife Myrna and supported by many and has supported many educational institutes and charitable institutes over his lifetime. His, as I said, his wife Myrna, his son Danny, Jim, as well as his brothers and sisters. Danny Villanueva, an All-American, a great human being. May he rest in peace. Also, another athletic person here, Jack Boyer, for Los Angeles City Council, for Los Angeles City College, excuse me, for many years, was a great professor and coach there and athletic director at City College. He was the athletic director when I was there, his wife Darlene and three children are survived by his passing. Jack Boyer, a great educator, Los Angeles City College, may he rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LeBange. Anyone else?
Paul, have a good weekend.
Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. O'Farrell? Oh, Mr. Price?
Thank you, Madam President. Members, I've raised today to adjourn in memory of Lucius Augustus Basson, known as Lou, to his friends and family. Lou was born April 6th, 1939, in New Orleans, Louisiana. Raised in Berkeley, California, he graduated from Berkeley High and enrolled in Contra Costa's College in Richmond, California. He left college to join the Army where his tour took him to Germany. When he returned from California, when he returned to California, he started a career as a fashion model in print advertising for different companies. He also became an extra in the movie industry with one of the most noticeable parts being a stand-in for Sidney Poitier in Guess Who's Coming to Dinner. While modeling, he decided to pursue a career as a hairstylist. He created hairstyles for celebrities like Vanetta McGee, Margaret Avery, Marilyn McCou and Florence Maru, LaRue of the Fifth Dimension. Hairstyling propelled Lou to begin writing newspaper articles for small African-American newspaper in Berkeley, the Berkeley Post. After interviewing a member from the music group Delights, he was offered an opportunity to try out to enter the entertainment world by becoming their manager. Basson moved on to various management positions with the Whispers, Natural Four, and the Pointers of Pear, who later became the Pointer Sisters. In 1977, he attended Cheyenne Frontier Days, the granddaddy of rodeos, with his assistant Linda Motley. Basson felt the experience was exciting but lacked black cowboys and cowgirls. His vision to start his own African-American rodeo circuit was realized in 1984 when he founded the Bill Pickett Invitational Radio. The Bill Pickett Invitational Rodeo is the only African-American touring rodeo in the U.S. and throughout the world. The rodeo has traveled to more than 33 cities across the U.S. and has drawn local and international media attention. Lou Basson passed away this month, leaving behind a lovely wife, children and a host of nephews and cousins. He will be greatly missed.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Any other adjournments? I have one. Colleagues, I'd like to adjourn in the memory of Alfred and Alice Alma Chacon. Mr. and Mrs. Chacon lost their lives in a car accident this past Saturday, June 20th, when the car of Mr. Chacon, the car that he was driving, was struck by a drunk driver. Ms. Chacon was 62 years old and Mr. Chacon was 61 years old. Mr. Chacon served the city of Los Angeles and the surrounding communities for over 30 years as an LA County Fire Department Maintenance Technician. After his retirement, he continued to serve the community by volunteering at the Panorama Gardens Nursery, Nursing and Rehabilitation Centers in Panorama City for 15 years. Alfred was a very active member of the Arlita Community, which he restarted with his wife and his children for over 32 years. He was in constant communication with my office and regularly assisted my team with quality of life issues in my district. Ms. Alice Chacon was a very, very active and loving woman herself. She served the residents of Los Angeles for 42 years as an industrial specialist for the United States Defense, Department of Defense. Her life as a public servant did not end last September when she retired. She enjoyed volunteering her time at the Mid Valley Library in North Hills, reading to children every Wednesday. Alfred and Alice Chacon were the pillars of their family and they enjoyed their time with their two children and grandchildren. I would dearly miss them. This was a huge tragedy for this family. They were very close to our office and may they rest in peace. Want to adjourn this meeting in their memory. This meeting is adjourned, thank you.